In session?
I thought we were on.
It's okay. If the screen is blue.
I thought we were on. Thank you. I thought we were. Okay. So, as you know, we had to postpone the first, or the morning session. We will redo that on Thursday of this coming week, starting at nine o'clock, on affordable housing. So today, we're going to, to get things started, I'm going to ask that we all stand, and Commissioner Bellamy will do our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for waking us up this morning, giving us life, health, and strength. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to come out and make decisions, the M-Pike, you know, our county. And we just ask you to watch over our country, our state, and our county, and all the things that's going on. We ask for your covering. And we thank you, in the name of Jesus, for your covering. And as we go through this workshop, we just ask you to open our minds up for the information that we're about to receive, and help us to be prepared to do the best that we can do in your name. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So our agenda this afternoon is going to be on environmental lands. I think it's going to be very interesting. We are, you know, this goes back to what we had on the ballot that the voters voted for, so we're trying to get everything lined up and in place to take care of that. I would like to take this opportunity to also mention that if, when we get to public comment, this is a workshop, so we only have public comment on items that we are talking about in the agenda today, of course, environmental lands. But it will be, anyone that's on Zoom, it will be up on the screen, the phone number for you to call. That being said, we'll go ahead and start moving forward.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
The electronic agenda was amended for public comments. Written comments submitted through the online public comment form were added to the agenda. Changes to agenda items, for the record. Item number one, all things housing update, review of affordable housing initiatives. This item was rescheduled to April 15th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. in the Honorable Patricia M. Glass Chambers. Item number two, environmental millage implementation. The PowerPoint presentation was updated and replaced, and those are all the amendments. Madam Chair.
Okay. And it's great to have our new county administrator with us today. Did a great job so far. Thank you. All right, Charlie, are you going to start us off, or?
Yes.
How do you want to handle that?
Yes, I'd like to do that, and by moving to a PowerPoint presentation that you have in your packets, but I hope that those following along in the media can get a feel for the direction we're headed. Chairman Baugh, after your remarks, I don't need to say anything. I say, any questions? It was exactly why we're here, to jumpstart and get our feet wet as we move forward into the implementation of the environmental millage program voted by voters for a 20-year period of time, to take a look at the important natural resources of Manatee County and take the steps necessary, steps that we've taken in the past, giving us a pathway forward to take additional steps, to find those lands of extremely high value to our environment, extremely high value to our economy, and extremely high value to many of the families that have shepherded these properties in the past and are now willing to engage a dialogue with the county for their acquisition or preservation through easement or fee simple acquisitions. To do that, of course, the voters did, as you mentioned, approve a series of initiatives that allow us to create a fund for this acquisition, and to manage that fund through a series of procedures, and with citizens oversight, and upfront and arms-length negotiations, so that we can move forward with these goals. My PowerPoint, I follow that. I encourage you to ask questions anytime, but I do have each of these things explained to some degree of detail, and it will be a short presentation. The first slide is a matter of a timeline. This is a two-slide presentation that takes us through the necessary steps to, first and foremost, allow the tax collector to operate from a resolution approved by the Board of County Commissioners that actually sets the millage, and sets the millage for all of incorporated and unincorporated county. All cities and unincorporated county will participate in the tax needed to raise the funds for acquisitions and some serious negotiation with property owners in the future. We're here today, on the 13th, of course, to go over the general concepts. No decisions can be made in a work session, but we are plouting out for you, on this timeline, the board meeting dates of May 11th, May 25th, June 5th, and June 27th. And if we follow these board meeting dates and accomplish the things that have been laid out for each of the dates, we will be in a position to give proper notice, timely notice, to the tax collector, so that he can, or he or she can move forward to implement on the tax bill. But today, I'll go over those steps. As I mentioned, on the 13th, we're going to be talking about these program implementation steps, principles and goals, and a governance structure for the implementation and management of this program. All, I might add, advisory to the Board of County Commissioners. There's no authority granted to a citizens oversight committee, other than to reassure and to assure the public that we are following proper procedure protocol and dealing directly and above board with all acquisitions that we consider. On the 11th, in the board meeting, it would be helpful to affirm the goals, the principles, and the governance of the program. And that, we review, again, in an official capacity, what we're going to be talking about today, of our bond capability and procedures. For, while the ordinance prescribes for a $50 million not-to-exceed bonding limit under the procedures of the ballot, there are other considerations that need to go forward on operations and maintenance counts and stewardship of funds that we'll go over. And I have Jan Brewer here, Director of Financial Management, my worthy partner, to explain those financial details for you today, and to go in far, far depth as we move forward. On May 25th, that's an important date, the adoption of a resolution and notifying the tax collector of the millage assessment. The county attorney's office will be working with staff and the county administrator to draft this resolution to carry out the principles, the governance, and all the other matters necessary to place this item on the ballot. Once that, Miles, there's more? No, I've seen her frown for the county attorney, but anyway, the resolution is necessary for the tax collector to put the item on the ballot. On June 5th and June 27th, once that milestone has been reached, then we can start working through what I call the action steps, or the outcomes of our procedures that are contained in our previous ordinances and procedures, like reviewing the type of priority ranking we will be using to evaluate parcels that come to you. We'll approve those rankings and grouping criterias, and be able to then, with those criterias, staff gets busy. Your staff, Parks and Natural Resources, gets busy to begin evaluating, on page two, to begin evaluating parcels in accordance with those criteria, so that we can come together with some type of grouping or prioritization, some thought about the pathway forward for the next 15 to 20 years, and more particularly, like our capital improvement plan, those important decisions in the next five or 10 years. We believe that with the collections that will begin on November 1st, because of the proper resolutions for the tax collector, revenues begin to be available in the first of the year of 2022. And there certainly will not be a right out-of-the-box purchase, because again, we're going to be very careful on how we move forward with those critical and high-value properties. But that during the February, March, April, you know, when does the rubber meet the road? We'll start bringing forward some applications for properties that we feel, that you feel, meet your criteria, your priorities, and get into some willing seller negotiations. And from there, it's full speed ahead, again, to provide the adequate protections, stewardship, and management of the lands that we acquire. I'd like to say that, before we go into the details, I think we got to this position with your confidence in what we've been able to accomplish in the past, the acquisitions that we've made with state grants, the acquisitions we've made with generous bargain sales from families, such as the Robinsons, the Neils, the Ungarellis, families such as those. I think, and then further, the management steps that we have taken with the properties that we have acquired, including that small 20,000-acre parcel in our drinking water watershed called Duette Preserve. But each of these parcels require the continuous and progressive maintenance, a maintenance by plan, a maintenance that attempts to replicate the natural forces at work, such as prescribed fire, allocations and control of exotics moving in, sometimes with very intensive physical efforts, other times by overcoming the ability of invasives to get a toehold, by making sure we have a solid blanket of native vegetation that prohibits that toehold of seed and source from exotics coming in. These are all steps we have taken, since I've been employed with Manatee County, with the purchase of the watersheds in 1984 and in 1986, which began the steps towards managing lands as a county asset, as opposed to simply saying, well, that's up to the state. Or that could be the federal government, if they could ever come here and do these systems. I've told a lot of people that art preserves represent what many think, feel are the national parks. We have visitor services, we have natural resources management, we have the enjoyment of serenity and beauty by public access and experience. There's more to do, and that's what this environmental millage gives us the tool to do. So, into some of the details, of course, the ballot that was passed by the voters had some very specific goals in mind, and I'm repeating them here just as a reminder of the direction this referendum and this implementation wants to take us. For instance, some of the goals, the goals in the ballot were, protect water quality. That's a wide-ranging requirement, not only for surface water, but also groundwater quality in the right places and locations. To preserve the fish and wildlife populations that sustain us, not only just the endemic or endangered species, but, you know, there's a few redfish out there I think people would like to harvest, and they too grow up in the nurseries of Manatee County. They too grow up in the nurseries of Robinson Preserve, Emerson Point, Neo Preserve, Ungarelli, Riverview Point, along our coastlines. And there are more opportunities out there for such acquisitions to continue at support. Preventing stormwater pollution is a wide-ranging goal as well, not only along the coastlines, but the upland lands that drain to our coastlines, the tributaries to the rivers, the rivers to Sarasota Bay, Sarasota Bay to the Gulf of Mexico and our beautiful beaches. All those things lay like a series of dominoes that begin from the very smallest stream to the ocean of the Gulf of Mexico. And if land acquisitions in strategic locations along hunter-year floodplains, along these minor tributary creeks, can set aside otherwise good development goals and keep them in their natural state instead of to a state of development, we're going to be able to improve and prevent further stormwater pollution from lands such as those. These are good goals to maintain throughout the life, our lives, in order to assure that we have a water quality here that supports our economy, supports the reason why people come here, and, again, provides that opportunity to do what we need to do as stewards of our environment. Those things occur through public acquisition or management, to provide preserves, parks of environmental value. In the ballot language, there's a focus on the environmental value of such places, as opposed to more of the active or high-intensity recreational parks. Because indeed, it is possible to partner with what would normally be a park acquisition, to have both. Let me say, for example, Bennett Park, probably 60% of that park is in a natural setting, requires management to keep the mangroves and the wetlands part of that park healthy and supporting the overall environment of the Manatee River, while 40% is an active park. The Hidden Harbor Park that we are under development, right across the street from the Fort Hima Park, is a park that's going to have a small element of recreation. Excuse me, that's just my, excuse me. It's Elliot Fallione probably hearing me right now. But that, those parks opposite of Fort Hima Park are going to be having a small recreational attribute, but for the large measure, is there to preserve and protect the enormous and braided wetlands of that partial salt, partial freshwater, that receives all of Gamble Creek, as it moves into the Manatee River and out to the Gulf. And finally, a ballot goal, as I mentioned before, is fiscal accountability to the citizens. And to do that with each and every, we have that goal and that requirement with each and every recommendation, or each and every opportunity we provide to you. But in addition to that, of course, we've seen that in the, for instance, in the tourist development tax, in the children's services advisory tax, we have seen how citizens advisory committees work well with the staff and with you, as partners, to assure that the acquisitions are, I want to say, above board. There's not ever going to be an acquisition that's not above board, but that it follows the general precepts of what is a valuable purchase? What is a valuable step to connect other purchases with this single purchase? Is it in keeping with the very affirmation of the ballot goals that we stated above? And so, a citizens advisory committee is going to be an important part of the implementation of this program. Next slide, please. And that implementation is what I would describe as governance, in that it begins with our citizens, which extends then to the Board of County Commissioners, who you represent, and from the board, to your professional staff, and to that citizens accountability committee in implementing this specific program. Back in, as I mentioned before, we have quite a history here in Manatee County of operating independent of the state, operating independent of the federal government, to bring those same types of resources under county ownership. I like to tell people who do a tour of Robinson, and I bring them to a particular lookout point. I want to say, look, see, as you stand here today, and if you are a resident of Manatee County, you own everything you see. Even if you're not a resident of Manatee County, as a Floridian or as a citizen of this world, in effect, you own or responsible for everything that you see. And in 1993, when we were struggling with how we're going to manage the 24,000 acres upstream of the Lake Manatee, the concept was brought about then. Many people wanted to come together to help us write a management plan for the property. Many people wanted to assure that the rights of public access to the property were going to be preserved. They were thinking of some properties in New England, where the town council or the water authority purchases the watershed, and it's a no trespass zone. They own the whole thing. That was never our intention in Manatee County with the acquisition of the lands we did. We were trying to protect and set aside phosphate mining interest in our watershed, but we embraced agriculture, we embraced stewardship, we embraced public access and recreation, like hunting, not only in the lands that we held, but the remaining 58,000 acres, making up the 88,000-acre watershed of Lake Manatee. So in keeping with those goals, an advisory committee was formed in 1992, and their intent and purposes was to draw up and draft the kind of management goals, managements for the plant, for the property, that met those goals, of public access, management, water quality protection. And they were assembled and started to meet regularly. I was there, providing the staff liaison services for those committees. And they met every year, on almost a monthly and sometimes quarterly basis, as the workflow raised and ebbed. In 2003, decision was made to make this resolution more of a codification of actual procedure, because this committee became advisory to the commission and making some important recommendations, how they felt about acquisitions that were presented to the public, or particular spot opportunities. And so we felt it important that they grow beyond just a simple resolution, but actually it codified in an ordinance that prescribed their duties, their membership, their opportunities for continued service, what their obligations were, how they were to perform, how they were to act under the Florida Sunshine rules, and basically, a policy book for this citizens' advisor committee, and that is ordinance 0362. In 2009, there was an interest to take hold of an advisory capacity for our, simply for our trees, our tree canopy and cover in Manatee County. Because at the time, like other places, we were thinking about the loss of tree canopy. Although if you're lucky enough to visit any one of the top floors of this building, and you look to the west or to the east, you wonder, well, this is why Bradenton calls themselves the Tree City. We have a resplendent tree canopy cover here, and this tree advisory committee wanted to, you know, participate in that and make sure that we continue to have such cover in the urban areas. And so it was thought, well, rather than hold new tree advisory committee, why don't we work with the LMAC members, who have expert, some of them who have expertise in this area, bring those functions into LMAC as well? And so that became ordinance 0967, which brought the tree function, advisory functions into the many duties of LMAC. So we're here today, in effect, to think further about how the citizens oversight can function for the implementation of this specific program. And we can give some thought to how the LMAC committee might serve that role, as they have for almost 20 years. But I'll move on to the next slide. Program principles are important, I think, to get right out, right out of the bat, right out of the gate, so that we can describe and assure you and the citizens the procedures we intend to follow. For instance, many people feel that, you know, big government is going to have to be aggressive and take property. Well, when there's a full public purpose, such as a transportation corridor, where there's no other choice, sometimes a taking must occur, or the road doesn't happen. Fortunately for us, in the environment, I'm going to say this, there's never going to be a property that we have to acquire with such importance, that we would not pursue a willing seller transaction. This is the very heart of stewardship and conservation. Families who hold these properties feel that, as the generations pass through the family tree, and they're no longer interested in farming 4,000 acres, that perhaps some of the valuable property within that 4,000 acres could be preserved for public domain and public enjoyment, and the support of the fish and wildlife of Manatee County. So times I, we're approached by families such as that, to say, how about, how about this or that? How about an easement to protect such things, where we retain property rights, but we give up their rights for development or changes that would affect the very quality of the environment that we, as a family, for generations have protected? Because we too love this land, and that we are often approached by those families to say, how can Manatee County continue that legacy when our future generations wish to no longer do that? I assure you that throughout Manatee County, there are parcels that will follow and be eligible for and qualified for protection, whether it's fee simple or easement. There are properties in every district. Now, you would say to yourself, okay, well, it's got some kind of a list going on, right in its back pocket. I want to assure you right now, there is no list. There's no preconceived notion out there of who's next in line. That would be our job. As I assured you, there are properties out there that hold great environmental value, but until a willing seller is ready to offer, there's no negotiation, there's no discussion, there's no heavy-handedness by government. We don't have to, because in Manatee County, there are many properties that share the same attributes, that give us the ability to never have to feel like we're boxed in, with this is the only property we can acquire to obtain this environmental value. And that's a little bit more into the purchase prices and how we acquire the property. I can tell you that the state of Florida, since the initiation of the Florida Forever Program and its predecessors, have used an appraisal model that works very well for the state, and I think it's one that we can embrace here in Manatee County. That being said, they look at properties and appraise them from a list of pre-approved appraisers, sometimes numbering 20 or 30, that they draw from, from around the state, who have, who are, first of all, knowledgeable about environmental values when they make appraisals, and that their appraisals have been vetted by their peers to be professional and on-target and accurate. For properties under $5 million, the state goes to that list of appraisers, obtains the appraisal, and then starts the negotiations with the property owner, sometimes for less than the appraised value, and very, very rarely, and think of the top sale property in Panhandle, they go over the appraisal. And that's with the full support, almost, of the cabinet, the government cabinet, when that happens. But what I want to emphasize is, when there's property is over $5 million, there are two required appraisals. And when those appraisals differ by more than 20%, a review appraisal is commissioned, and that one sets the value going forward. So there's always, almost like a moderator in the middle of high-value properties, where there's a considerable difference of opinion. This is possible, and has worked well for Florida, and I think this is, I believe, this is the type of approach we want to follow with environmental lands, whose appraisals have to take into account a market value, for sure, but a very delicate appraisal of the value of the wetlands that are there, for their environmental benefit, as well as economic benefit. The next bullet says, "A portfolio approach for all priority groupings by category." There's nothing worse for a government negotiation team to deal with a property owner that says, hm, I'm number one on the list, and with this priority, I can hold out for the best price, I believe, reasonable for my family, because, you know, I'm number one on the list. I think many counties, while the state of Florida does prioritize by number, because everyone wants to know, am I number 56? Am I number 13? What can I do to get from 13 up to 10 next year? They're always working against that. I think at the local government level, where we're not dealing with properties with wide valuations across the entire state of Florida, from the Panhandle to the Florida Keys, we just have Manatee County, that we can work from groupings, high, medium, and low values, categories A, B, and C, and not just one property in category A and one property B, but let's say, five or 10 in category A. So as we negotiate with a willing seller from a category A- So as we negotiate with a willing seller from a category A property and we come to a fork in the road and we can't seem to agree on value, we go to the next one. And I think it's important for property owners to understand that, that we're never going to be, again, boxed in to a high priority or perceived priority by a landowner when we're negotiating the acquisition. Lastly, some of the program principles, I ask that we distinguish in our acquisitions what I call a small parcel set aside. Because if we truly start to evaluate the value of parcels by a number of set criteria, which I'll go into in just a minute, if you're a 20-acre parcel or a 30-acre parcel like the Johnson Preserve that we did acquire recently, it's going to be difficult to think that a 30-acre parcel is going to hold all the attributes of a 1,000-acre parcel. Now, how many 1,000-acre parcels are we going to be acquiring? Not too many. There's not that market interest out there. But you could easily see where a 1,000-acre parcel would get all the points, the small parcels would never compete and would never buy them. So we need to have, and we haven't set on a value yet, but there needs to be a little bit for small and larger amount for large by virtue of their costs. But that will help ensure that no one gets left behind. Because luckily for us, there are some smaller parcels that are very valuable where they're situated. And acquisitions for those types of things can be prioritized within their own group, within their own class. Next slide. Now, the real interesting thing, interesting because I'm going to ask Jan to help me present this, in that bonding capability comes to you by voter approval. And again, it gives you the ability to start serious negotiations with high-value properties. You know, when you look at, someone says, well, you know, my property's got, it's 10,000 an acre, yeah, a couple hundred thousand, except when you have 1,000 acres. And so there may be, and again, I don't have a property list right now, nobody does. But there may be some larger parcels that are going to be high value and high dollar. And landlords will be looking to close on those very quickly. And so, Jan, if we could talk about what the voter initiative and the millage that was approved brings to you as a financial tool to proceed with the program.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, County Administrator, County Attorney, Jan Brewer, Director of Financial Management. I think Charlie just wanted me to give you an overview of about where your land with all this. So you have .15 mils based upon the millage you had last year. That brings in about $6.2 million on an annual basis. Now, within the language that was on the ballot, you had a 50 million cap on bonding. It could be one time or several times, but the accumulation of it would be that. So to give you some perspective, because the ballot language also talked about maintenance, that you'll be bringing in 6.2 annually. And even if you did it at 2%, that's kind of high for right now, but over 30, 20 years. And you can actually go to 30 years if it's based upon land. I just did 20 because we're trying to get the middle range. You're about $3 million. So about half of what you're bringing in is going to go toward the debt service if you did it all at once. Again, there's strategies to do it once Charlie has his list established. But I think he just wanted you to understand again. And as we had talked about before, bonding is about a three-month process by the time you get going. So I just wanted to bring those options to you and I'd be happy to answer any questions on it.
We'll save questions until the end of the presentation, Jan, if that's okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you again. And that's a great segue into another comment I want to make. When we began working with the environmental community, and I want to, my appreciation goes out to the Manatee Fish and Game Association, my appreciation goes out to Manatee Audubon, my appreciation goes out to Manatee Sierra Club, to the League of Women Voters, and to the Conservation Foundation of the Gulf Coast, and individual citizens who participate in what I would fairly describe as a grassroots effort to get us to this point throughout the ballot initiative. It wasn't, it was not staff-driven. We were asked at one point, is it the right time? Can you use these resources? Are there more properties of higher value that we need to work for? Our answer was absolutely yes to everything. However, we said, right now, you have 13 individuals taking care of 30,000 acres of property at 15 locations. Some of those locations carry visitation of over 200,000 to 300,000 visitors a year. Each Emerson, its own numbers, Robinson, its own numbers, other places, high numbers.
Can you move the mic up?
Oh, sorry.
That was Jan's side.
Okay.
Sorry, Jan.
High visitation numbers, visitor services. We maintain those preserves. We do it with our ranger corps. From cleaning bathrooms to kind of maintaining the trails, keeping the trash off the trails, the legacy of dog walking in our parks. And also, very active and intense land management. It's green, isn't it? Is the statement that we have often made, but it isn't the right kind of green. We have some of the world's most invasive species here, right here in Florida, that grow healthily, excuse me, healthily in a Florida environment without competition from predators or insects or other things, such things as Australian pines, carrotwood, cogan grass imported from Africa, things that we battle each and every year, things that would gladly take over unmaintained land. Then there's the introduction of fire to replicate the natural seed and growth cycles that are important to maintaining a natural environment. So visitor services, land management, advanced planning, acquisition of grants. I'd like to say that our group, our department, works very hard to take advantage of every grant opportunity that comes to us for acquisition of chemicals, to acquisition of lands, to acquisition of equipment and materials to take care of the lands. So maintenance of lands is so important that we said, if we're moving forward with an initiative to acquire more property, we're not going to be able to support that without the ability to move some of those proceeds to the management of the lands we acquire. I think many programs have failed in the public eye when they've been aggressive in acquiring just the land and said, well, we'll take care of the maintenance later, we'll get to that, we'll get to that. And it doesn't happen. And it doesn't take an untrained eye to see lands that have gone into disrepair. I'd like to say that you're not going to find an Australian pine at Emerson Point right now. I'd like to say that you're not going to find a carrotwood tree in Robinson Preserve. And that's 1,000 acres right there between the two properties. But it takes intensive maintenance. So what we've described is the stewardship of these cash reserves need to be, in part, available for equipment, chemicals and materials, and people to work those properties. We can't do it without it. Can't. Okay, last slide. Second last slide. Some are wondering, well, you know, this is a great idea about this environmental land, and what is environment? How do we define that? How do we distinguish one property from another, given that they're both green, they're both in a watershed maybe, I don't know? Well, there are things that programs across the state of Florida have been using successfully for decades in addressing just that task. And we are not alone. Pasco, Pinellas, Hillsborough, Citrus, Charlotte, Lee County, Colia County, even Polk County has programs of dedicated millage for acquisitions and well-rehearsed methods of prioritization. Some of those factors include, for instance, you know, is it utilized by our imported animals and plants? Because sometimes it takes specific elevation or water or proximity to other locations to support those. Proximity to surface water resources is obviously important, not the only important thing, but has to be considered. Value for stormwater improvement. We have some creeks in urbanized Manatee County in the Tiff District that are described by the state of Florida as impaired, not meeting state criteria. With some strategic acquisitions along those creek lines, and again, in a smaller park scale, we can acquire property to allow us to divert what I call the base flow, not the rushing storm flow, but the flow that moves to that creek each and every day, carrying with it pollutants, and move that through a stormwater park and acquire water quality protection for that impaired water body. Where should we prioritize those things? Where the water's in trouble. And we can utilize a program like this to help clean it. Complexity and management restoration needs. Sometimes a property is pristine. The family was very careful to not let excise come in. It would be easy for us to assume those properties without a big burden on new staff or costs. On the other hand, there are some properties that are a mess. They have to be redone. Or, for instance, remember that we bought Robinson Preserve expansion as a farm field, 150 acres of grass. And what have we done to turn that back into a coastal value? That's a very intensive management, but deservedly so there because of its location on the Lower Manatee River in Tampa Bay. Maybe we wouldn't want to tackle that on a property that's east of I-75, not on a water body, just kind of out there in the middle, been carrying cattle for a number of years. It'd be a management challenge. It's not that we reject properties like that, but the difficulty or ease can factor into how we prioritize something like that. Adjacency to an existing park or an out parcel inside of a park. This is on the spirit that if you've got people maintaining Park A and you add 15 or 30 acres to Park A, probably the same people can maintain that without adding additional staff. However, if you choose to buy 20 parcels distributed all throughout Manatee County adjacent to nothing, it's going to require more people to travel to, from, and back and forth. So again, adjacency gives some properties a leg up on others with the same attributes. Risk of conversion, sometimes the property is about ready to go. Riverview Point was such a property. When Neil Monassa Company put down 13 lots on that property, the neighbors next door raised $100,000 in two weeks to help us acquire that with a state grant of 88%. So we, but it wasn't until, I think, the neighborhood woke up to say that this scout camp area next to the Soul National Memorial has been with us forever and is going to stay that way. And it became quickly clear that it wasn't. And so we needed to act quickly in some places like that because it was at risk to convert. Level of owner participation and discount. Again, Robinson Preserve was $17 million on their books and they agreed. And had it been a corporation and not a family, asking price would have been $17 million. The selling price was 11 because the family took a, family took a discount. Not too many corporations can stomach a tax discount against a business plan of their own. And then, of course, that classic, there's going to be others by you, the board, on priority. But when you say, well, it's an environmental land, think about these attributes as distinguished from a good commercial corner at Cortez Road and 26th Street. Finally, no, I'm about it. Results-first philosophy says, how do you measure your acquisition performance? Well, we spent a lot of money. Or we acquired a lot of acreage. Doesn't do it. Gladly, within our ordinance for LMAC, and within our procedures to set priorities, we can measure attainment by meeting those priorities, such as acres acquired in fee and less than fee acquisitions, that's a numeric value, number of listed species protected. Who did we, did you ask the ducks? Did you get to the right animals out there? Did you acquire those and not just anything old property? What kind of commitment did you make for protection and restoration for the long run? An important one, grant dollars leveraged. About 15 years ago, I was being, I was able to say that we acquired $45 million of property for $15 million of local funding, because the remaining 30 million came from the Florida Committee's Trust and resident, family donations on bargain sales and other factors. Point is, we didn't spend $45 million for $45 million of appraised value. We pledged to leverage grants wherever we could because we could. We have such high-value properties here still remaining in Manatee County, which is one of the reasons why many people choose to continue to live here with a beautiful array of opportunity out there. And the last slide is our famous questions, so I'm ready to go. And as are others, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Charlie. Commissioner Whitmore.
I am so happy this finally came before us. I think our public has spoken regarding this matter. I've got questions and comments. Is Florida Forever model the same as Preservation 2000? When I was city commissioner and mayor, that's what we used for Grassie Point?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so if I can recall, I think they paid for the entire preserve, which was like 18, no, 33 acres, and it was two or three buildable lots on it, they were able to acquire it and...
You did, you were fortunate because you were under 50,000 population cap.
Right.
And like small parcels, large parcels, the Florida Forever program took in consideration smaller cities that didn't have those resources but equally important property.
And actually, the only thing we had to do, they still are doing today, we had to have a management plan. And they're still working on that today. And I just wanted to let the public know how these things happen. Some of you know David Zaccanino. He used to be a city commissioner in Holmes Beach. And he's also a financial planner. And he was with a client and called me when I first came into office, maybe it was the first or second year, and said, I have a client here whose husband passed away and she wants to, she's considering donating her property for a tax deduction. And it actually happened to be behind ACES, it was Ungarelli Preserve. That's, it was Mr. Ungarelli, Mrs. Ungarelli that came before us. So Dave calls me and I ask the county administrator if it was all right if I went out there just to talk to her. He used to be a city commissioner with me, so we had a relationship. So we went and sat at our kitchen table and then we brought Charlie in. Literally, they had the lots for sale for a million or two, and it's right along Palmasola Bay, it's Palmasola Boulevard and Cortez Road, right there. And that was about 18 acres, 1822?
Yes.
Something like that. Literally, we got it, I think, we, the county ponied up 150,000 and the state picked up the other half.
Yes, they did, which represented one half of the assessed value, not the appraised value.
Right. So we received that from the charitable donation of somebody that needed the tax deduction but also preserved our shoreline for water quality. You talked about LMAC. I kind of lost track when you said the dates. Did it start in 92 or 2003? You were calling it Citizens Committee, but when was it called LMAC?
It was established by resolution in 1992.
Okay, so we've had this committee and we used to have, and Madam Chair, I'm not sure if we do anymore, we used to appoint a commissioner to be the liaison on that. Because when I first came in office, I used to go to the meetings every quarter. And there are 13 members on it. It's a very important board. And if we decide to do something like this, I think we should have, you know, we used to have staff as on it, I mean, in the audience, but they'd also have a commissioner on it. And then we used to give a report to the board on what happened at LMAC. And I think we've lost that for some reason, I don't know why we are doing it. But all those members are voted by commissioners and we all look at their backgrounds and some of them have been on it many years. Some are environmental engineers or architects and Bell's former executive board member, he's still on it. I had asked Charlie for a list of who's currently on it and what their background is, because I think that's important that we all know. And I cannot find the list. So before, before, if you could at least give us some kind of flavor of who's on that board. To me, 71%, I think it was 71% of our public voted for this, no matter what party you on, 71% of the entire public voted for this. And when I voted for it, it was to protect the shorelines, the rivers, the water quality, et cetera. And I remember LMAC identified when I was on the board, spits of properties like on Bradenton River. It wasn't a buildable lot, but it would be great to preserve it because there's, or maybe it was buildable, but it was hard to get to. And they would come back as to the liaison on the board and at least in the staff and give us that so we could take it to administration. And I think we've kind of lost it. And if we decide to use the board, which I hope we do, I think that needs to be reinstituted again. The finance, I'm going to leave to others to... The finance, I'm going to leave to others to talk about, but you know, it's so nice to see the citizens actually voted for something and overwhelmingly voted for something. And it's good that we're here today. But I don't think a lot of the board, well, I'm probably sure most don't know who's on the board and their background because they work very hard on this board. And really, a lot of their ideas you've seen, but you didn't know that they were behind it because they're only recommending and they would take it to staff and staff would eventually work up the ranks and someday we would see it. But they really have identified properties throughout the county for years that we have made, maybe have come to fruition, but you didn't know that they were behind it. So Madam Chair, if it's okay, if he could just give us a flavor of who is on that board currently, if you have it?
I don't have the names, but I have the qualifications.
Okay, oh, good. Well, I lost mine.
It's, and it is stated in ordinance 03, excuse me, not 03, sorry. In ordinance 0362.
Okay.
Membership of the committee will be made up of 15 members as described here and it was amended to include a named individual in, in, excuse me, the ordinance that followed it. But the membership of the committee has not been changed. One member must be a member of the Florida Engineering Society. One member must be a member schooled in natural science, ecology, biology, botany, et cetera, by virtue of their resume. Another must be a member with a background or education in active outdoor sports. Another one is a member of a local environmental group. Another is a member recommended by the Manatee Chamber of Commerce, usually someone coming forward from their Natural Resources Committee. Two year-round residents of Manatee County, one of whom shall be a resident of one of the communities on Animal Island or Longboat Key to assure geographic diversity. One, an employee of the Manatee County School Board. Often we have partnerships there. Another, a member with a background in education in banking, finance, or real estate. Another member engaged in the agriculture business of farming, ranching, or commercial Four at-large members who are residents of Manatee County with what I might say is a heartfelt interest in environment, wanting to serve on a committee that meets once a month and every night, the background work, but nonetheless are welcomed. And one member from Manatee Beautiful, Keep Manatee Beautiful Organization was added in the preceding ordinance.
And they meet in the evenings, correct?
Yes, they do.
And late into the evenings.
Sometimes, if I stop, if I talk too much.
Fifteen members.
Sorry. As the clerk, recording clerk would attest. Because their meetings are recorded and minutes are taken, and the clerk has been providing these services since 1992.
93.
93. Thank you, sorry.
Okay, so Charlie, I'm on the board next, and then it'll be Commissioner Cruz and Commissioner Servia. But just, okay, so there's 15 members right now on LMAC. Okay. And I didn't hear you say anything about any members. I know you mentioned, I think it was Longboat Key and I forget what the other one was.
I've seen it. Yeah, a member who must be from the island communities.
Island communities. But I didn't hear anything about out east or in North County. Is there anyone specified that has to be from North County and East County?
No, not by geographic, but within the four at-large members.
Okay. Well, the reason I ask that is because obviously, you know, North County and East County have kind of, you know, really grown in the last few years, so that is something that we might need to look at. Also, I'm just curious, I think that for what we're talking about here, and I've talked to a couple of citizens, and I think it would be great to have a few just regular citizens on the board that aren't quote-unquote LMAC. So, you know, that is something that this board can look at and just, we're not going to decide that today, obviously. So I, I think we're on the right track there. But I, I still don't quite understand the procedures. I mean, I looked at everything that you presented and how you said it and so forth, but the bottom line is, if a piece of property is selected, ultimately, does it come to this board for final decision? Or, I didn't hear you say that, Charlie, so I'm confused. I want to make sure the public understands because this is huge for, you know, the public.
Yeah. The Board of County Commissioners is the only body that can recommend and act on a purchase recommendation that comes to you from staff and through the advisory committee process in an effort to properly evaluate the property.
Okay. I, really, I wasn't sure if that would be something, you know, the LMAC committee would bring forward or what. I wasn't totally sure. The programs and principles that you presented, I think I know the answer, but just in case, who approved those? Where did those come from?
Those came from previous work that we had done.
Who's "we"? I know you said that a lot, "we," but I wasn't sure if you meant Board of County Commission, I wasn't sure and I don't think the public knows either.
In anticipation of a sales tax vote back in 2005, 2006, the LMAC committee came very active in trying to identify how we could prioritize and quantify value across the environmental spectrum. That was one source. The second source is, again, those attributes used by successful programs in our southwest Florida counties and in programs such as Alachua County and Volusia County, Miami Dade and Broward, who also have similar programs such as ours. I think you find across the spectrum of Florida and expanding out into the nation, those kinds of attributes are recognized as distinguished for environmental purposes.
And just, Charlie, so you know, I mean, I'm not finding fault with them, I just didn't know exactly where they came from. But ultimately, this board approved them, I'm assuming.
Yes, they did. And remember, they were never used to acquire any property because we never did get a dedicated funding source.
Right, right. Okay, I know when this came before us, I know you're saying that no land has been looked at or, or, you know, we don't, I'm going to say "we." The board doesn't really have their eye on any properties at this point to look at, to purchase with this, with this money. But I do know, and I have to bring this up, because initially, I didn't vote for this. And the reason I didn't was because it worried me that, I'm not going to go into major detail, but, you know, we actually had a commissioner had to recuse herself from voting because of a piece of property. So there isn't any property that, that has been designated or being looked at or anything else to your knowledge at this point?
By, and I'll just, by our department, of course...
Well, I, I'm not even just going to say, how about county as a whole?
No, I can't, I can't speak for other organizations. The member you're talking about was, was working with the Conservation Foundation of the Gulf Coast, which, as you know, has been very active in acquisitions in three counties and working with landowners in processes very similar to what are being proposed here. But of course, they have their own funding sources, their own board of directors, and they, as I mentioned, they hold property interest in properties in Manatee County going through that process. But I wanted to emphasize that the Parks and Natural Resources Department has not yet undertaken an assessment or analysis of eligible properties in Manatee County. As soon as the ballot came through, I can honestly say that I received three emails from properties, property owners out there to say, hey, why don't you consider something like that? You know what I've done? I've said, push the button to put this into a file. I'm not going to consider it until we have a board authorized procedure, protocol, and method. So I can honestly say that our department has not ventured into this domain until you adopt what we have here.
And another thing that, that has been brought to me by several people in the community is that, you know, a lot of people are really against development. And people, many people have, have said to me, well, you know, the county should buy this property with the money that we just approved. Well, that's not how it works. I mean, so I, I think we're going to have to be very clear on whatever the criteria is, we're going to have to really nail that down because it's not to buy property, you know, because the citizens don't want it developed. I mean, that, that's not what we're talking about here.
And, and, and Madam Chair, if I can engage in dialogue...
Got his attention, he wants to say something here in a minute.
I was going to, Madam Chair, I want to engage in dialogue. I've worked with, for Manatee County for 41 years, 28 of them in this specific field. So for me to say, I've not thought about a particular property in Manatee County ever, no, that's not right either. I know where there are parcels, properties that hold distinct environmental value, that carry a large list of environmental species. We've been working with the Water Management District for over 20 years, who undertake those same steps. They, at one point, they, they did a save our rivers prioritization of probably 25 parcels in Manatee County, ranked them according to their importance. I was part of that process. So there's a lot of carryover knowledge for me to say, I haven't looked at a property in the last month and a half. But it's not that. I know where some of these are, but I haven't, you know, I've met with one landowner who said, I want you to come out and take a look at this. And I said, sure, we'll come out and take a look at it. But we haven't taken anything in terms of a list or tried to put that in perspective with other properties until this board adopts these things. Okay.
All right, Charlie, thank you. Just, that's just a few of the questions, I'm sure I'll have more. Mr. County Administrator, did you have anything you want to add, sir?
Yes, ma'am. Just before you, right before you were to leave that point, just wanted to, just for the record, the, the county commission first created the committee in March 93. It was again revised in October of 2003 and then most recently in December of 2009. And when you're ready, I have a list of the members. And the point I wanted to make there is now that funding, a funding source has been created at the board's pleasure, you may want to take a look again at the most recent ordinance with, which creates the makeup of the committee to reflect changes in growth in, in the community. And then if you would like, I have the current members in front of me. And what's important there is 12 of the 15 members have terms that expire in September this year.
Oh, interesting. Thank you for that information. Commissioner Cruz.
Sure, I kind of, two different tiers towards what I want to ask and or, and or say. One's more of the policy of where we're thinking, the second is in terms of the numbers themselves. First off, as an aside, what Chair Boss says is 100% accurate, I've heard the same thing. This is an environmental land mitigation tax, this isn't a Burt Harris mitigation tax. At no point are we buying a triangle on 675 or a parcel that's going to have a car dealership just because someone doesn't want. I'm just saying, I've seen a bunch of parts, I'm just using it because it's relevant and timely.
Yeah.
But that's not the intent of this. It's not for us to avoid making decisions on a land use meeting with taxpayer money. But let me start first with the, the number side and then I'll kind of give my other side of this. I'm playing with numbers here. What is, and I don't have it in front of me, what is your budget for management of our current parks and natural resources, roughly, just off the top of your head?
I'm going to take just a moment to answer that question.
Okay.
Is somewhere south, 1.5 million each and every year?
For all of the parks?
For 30,000 acres.
Thousand acres, right.
Okay.
Not, not the parks, not, for all, let me...
No, it's not bad, but that's where my, okay. Now, let's play, now let's play with numbers because that's the fun part for me.
Okay, for all the preserves.
Lot returned.
Based upon, okay, now wait, wait with this more. And that one point, that 1.3, 1.4 million is leveraged, probably 50% to grow it to over two and a half with grants that we receive, which we could not do without those grants. If we, if we didn't get the grants, our budget would have to be that. And it is, it is constrained with a ceiling that says, oh, we'd like to spend 5 million a year, but we don't have the money. We're just keeping, but we're just keeping up with what we have. So I'm proud of the maintenance that we do perform and it's, it's the bare minimum. Because there are some properties where we are losing the battle to Japanese climbing fern and to...
Okay. Answer my question because we're talking about this. And when I saw this on the ballot and didn't vote for it, but appreciate some people, a lot of people did, it was presented as, and my belief was, we were just going to buy a ton of land, it was going to stop some development, it was going to do. I'm looking at the numbers here based on, we said this year would be about 6.2 million based on the millage. And our max bonding, I know you said middle, but I went back and looked, we're capped at bonds up to 20 years, there is no potential 30 years or whatever. The ordinance actually said max 20 years. And even Jan said 2% is probably higher right now, especially, but let's use that. The total debt service per year, and that's fixed, once you sell these bonds, you're effectively, especially if you get fixed rate, well, if you get fixed rate bonds, it's fixed as, as our millage changes, it's only going to be $3 million, $3.035 million per year for debt service. Meaning even in year one, we have $3.2 million of excess that we're collecting from taxpayers that isn't going towards buying land. It's not going to, go ahead.
It could. I'd like the county attorney to render, I think you made a judgment call to me earlier, Attorney Clegg, that said, after the bond amounts in the referendum have been satisfied, it's still possible to use additional proceeds for additional bonding. Was that a misstatement?
You won't answer.
So I think, Madam Chair, Commissioner Cruz, your point's well made. There's a lot more money in here than just money for debt service. When you look at the millage you can levy, quite a bit of it will not be used up by debt service to issue the maximum $50 million aggregate principal amount in bonds that are authorized. That is correct.
Okay.
The money that is left after paying the debt service on that 50 million in bonds can be used also to improve and manage the properties. So that was, that was, that was driven by the advocates for this who asked, came to the board and asked them to put this on the ballot. So it does say acquisition, improvement, and management of land. So it's not purely a land program.
Understood, oh, I'm well, well aware of that.
I know, and I'm just trying to kind of walk through here because Charlie asked me what the different available uses are. It is true, there is a famous case called Tucker v. Underdown in Florida law that every young bond associate has to learn, which basically says that you can still use money to pay debt service that you haven't pledged those revenues to. You can, in other words, issue debt based on some other collateral revenue source, non-ad valorem, and use some of this money to pay that additional debt service without violating the general obligation rules that require the voters to approve it. So that flexibility is there if the board wanted to issue more bonds, but you would have to come up with another revenue source to collateralize those bonds.
Well, here's, here's the thing.
That's all I'm trying to do is give you the legal lay of the land here, not the policy issues.
Oh, understood, understood, yeah, because let's, let's go back. So it's about $3 million of debt service per year, and that's principal and interest. So even in year one, that's almost $3.2 million above and beyond debt service, which you just said, even with, with our grants, we're only spending about $2.5 million, you said a million and a half for, for maintenance of everything we have today, including Robinson and Emerson and everything else. With grants, it doubles, that's $3 million. So just our excess cash from this millage is as much, if not more, than our current operating cost of all of our parks and natural resources in all of Manatee County today?
That's true. However, what I mean is development, if we were only to acquire the land and, and maintain it for its environmental integrity and not provide any public access or facilities on those lands to support public access for safety and security, that's where we would be. But with each of those properties, we'll require in the future, if we want to have public access, will be an expenditure level for allowing the public to be able to enjoy...
Understood. So I took the 6.2 and in the past couple of years, our tax base has been increasing approximately 7%, like 68% per year between organic growth of new homes and buildings as well as just property value increases. So we're going to be collecting this millage for 20 years. So I blew out the, the property base at a 7% increase over 20 years, which implies over the 20-year life of this ordinance, we will be collecting $254 million, of which 60 goes towards the bond repayment and interest, leaving us $193.4 million for operations of parks. That's how the numbers work. Which means each year we'll have, on average over 20 years, $9.7 million of excess collectible tax on this for operations. That's 76% of the tax collected. So I'm just making sure we understand what we're, we're doing with the money because when we talked about... when we talked about some of the options we had, some of the things mentioned were stormwater and water quality, but that should already be getting done with, with money we have today, it seems like we're trying to cram that in here. And there certainly will be enough in this excess money and not in the fifty million dollars in bonds where that kind of seemed like it, it snuck its way in there, we shouldn't be buying land for stormwater remediation, we're going to have more than enough money to fix stormwater with the rest of this, if that's the intent. And we, we still collect impact fees, and we still have parks as part of IST, and parks, you know, so we've got other money on, above and beyond this millage for some of the things we mentioned in there that we're going to do with this. I just want to make sure, when we're thinking about how we're going to handle it, what our protocols are going to be, and, and I've got that here, we're acknowledging the fact that if we'd sell fifty million dollars worth of bonds to buy fifty million dollars for the property, it should be a meaningful fifty million dollars for the property that's showing something in return to the people, the seventy percent, seventy-one percent of the people who did this, because we're going to have over a hundred and ninety million dollars of, of extra money. We don't need to be using this nominal fifty million dollars for stormwater or for little things, we've got more money than we're going to know what to do with, with this, this ordinance and this additional millage. So, you know, some of, so my thoughts on it is, one, we should be using this for, for actual usable space if we're going to have this. You know, looking around places like, you know, there is growth in north and east, looking places around Lake Manatee, trying to create, you know, a, a big place over a watershed where there could be mountain biking and trails and things that can be usable for, for people. So, you know, like Robinson Preserve, you, you buy a couple of half-acre parcels, people forget about it, it's meaningless. You buy Robinson Preserve, people use it as a, a major amenity in Manatee County, they feel like their taxes went towards something important. We, we can buy the little stuff, the things that are protecting us from stormwater with the other massive amount of money we've got left over. So, you know, that, that, that's where my thought is, is let's, let's focus our policy on this fifty million, on things that, that we can show the taxpayers they're getting something in return for, and not focus on little things that, that can be and should be already covered by IST and impact fees and, you know, the other hundred and ninety-three million dollars. I think that's what we need to start looking at, is, okay, we've got this massive pool above the bonds, how much of that do we want to spend? Because that doesn't mean we can't spend some of this on land as well, it's just not going to be bondable, it's not going to be leveraged. That doesn't mean that with a hundred and ninety-three million, if you're saying we're spending two and a half, three million dollars today, let's double it because we're buying more land, now all of a sudden it's, it's six million dollars. Well, three million dollars, it's still only sixty million of this, taking another three million per year of it to, to double your current budget, that's still leaving us a hundred and thirty million dollars of extra money. Some of that can be used for more land, just not leverageable, that can be used for fixing our stormwater issues and other environmental concerns, redfish and, and things on the waterways and improving our current parks. There's a lot we can be doing with this. I, I think that's just how, where I would like to see our, our policy focus go, is focusing first on this bond issuance and what we want to spend it on, I'd rather that be big, grand projects, and the rest of it on, I think we do need to have a discussion of if we're continuing to grow at seven percent a year, that's going to be a big pool of capital, and I believe once you and your team come back and say, this is roughly what we think our budget's going to increase by, not just because of new land purchase, but just to catch you up, you're saying some of it, you cut some corners here and there, not cut corners, I, I don't mean it that way, that sounds negative. There's some things you're unable to do based on your current budget that you would like to do for the, for the good of Manatee County. Let's see what, what your budget needs to be out of this, let's see what's left, and then let's collectively decide how to do it. Because when I ran these numbers, I, I was amazed, because I honestly thought this millage was to purchase land. And I understand you have to take care of the land, that's, that's the catch when you do anything with infrastructure or whatever, there's, there's ongoing maintenance, but seventy-six percent of it is not going towards land based on this bond acquisition. So that, that, that's my thoughts on it, is, I think it's a two-tiered thing, one is what do we do with the fifty million, the other one is what do we do with the other hundred and ninety-three million dollars that's above and beyond the, the debt service payment? Because there's a lot we can do with that, that, this isn't just a fifty million dollar bond issuance people are agreeing to, this is two hundred and fifty million dollars worth of taxes over a twenty-year period, that's an average of twelve point seven million dollars a year in taxable revenue we're collecting over a twenty-year window. So let's, let's, let's have that bigger discussion as well.
I just want to, my comment to that, which is not meant to be counter, but as we look at increasing values of taxable value across the county, that's reflected in increasing values of property that we need to acquire each and every year. So in other words, the, the land values are also going up at that same rate, and we have to, we have to think about that as well.
You, you do, but the attention was to, to utilize this sooner rather than later, and you're only talking fifty million of it.
Yes.
So, it, it's, it's a little different, because this is a seven percent growth over twenty years, so seven percent growth over five years doesn't have quite the same, you know, dramatic effect this is going to be, it's not a compounding thing for two decades as it would be for a few years.
And we have to consider that properties that we are interested in, holding these attributes with large acreage are more than likely going to be all over five million dollars when we look at the, the acquisition task ahead of us, which I mentioned gives value to making sure we have a number of projects in our portfolio, so we're not backed into a corner to say, well, we have to have this one. And I need the landlords to understand that each and every time we approach them, they're not the only offer in town. But, thank you.
All right, I want to mention that Commissioner Van Austinbridge is on Zoom, I forgot to mention that at the beginning of this meeting. Dr. Hopes, and then Mr. Clegg, and then Commissioner Servia.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Cruz is going down the right path in that this has not been modeled into a pro forma that inflates the tax base. And so, as you go through the discussion, this presentation is really intended to sort of stimulate your thought process, and it is, as Commissioner Cruz, this is, this is beyond a, a piece of property here and a piece of property over, you know, out east. It, it is an opportunity for this board to make substantial investment in, in environment and, and parks and properties to engage new communities, you know, with the Manatee County environment, because the numbers are more than what that static snapshot would, would present. So what we will do is begin doing some modeling and forecasting so that you have a, a, a pro forma, so to speak, that gets us through that, that twenty-year period where you, you see how the numbers grow, and then to consider that type of investment, especially in, in some of the newer communities, but, but, you know, there, there are things that can be done on the islands as well, so. And one note that I got from Deputy Minister Stewart is that the Resolution twenty fifty-six was repealed by Resolution twenty-one fifty-four on September twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty.
What does that mean?
Well, all this stuff here that I have-
It was repealed.
Revealed, so we'll-
That's all you had to say, thanks Karen.
According to Ms. Stewart.
Attorney Clegg?
I just wanted to follow up to Commissioner Cruz's comments that the, the legal restrictions on what you can do with the money are dictated by the ballot language.
Right.
And that said, acquire, improve, and manage land for a range of purposes, protect drinking water sources and water quality, preserve fish and wildlife habitat, prevent stormwater, all those things that you see listed there. And just as you say, you can, you can use the money for both capital and operational costs for any one of those uses. Obviously, you can only leverage fifty million of it, but you can cash fund capital costs as well, which I think was in your remarks, as a recognition of that. So, it is broader than just buying a piece of land as an environmental preserve, there are a lot of other things that are in the mix there. And yeah, the board's going to have to decide, it is quite a bit of money, how you're going to use it for those purposes.
Commissioner Servia?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman, and I want to start by thanking Charlie. Charlie, that was an excellent presentation, you did a great job. And I think it's a timely discussion, as we were all out at Piney Point this morning with our governor, you know, hearing about an environmental disaster, and today we're talking about environmental protection. And life is all about that balance, you know, we, we have so many people who are moving here every year. I think the last time I heard, the count is about ten thousand new residents in Manatee County every year. And that growth doesn't seem to be letting up. And so, what the voters decided on with this referendum is that they're not making any more land. And so, we, if we don't preserve some of it now, there won't be any to preserve in the future. You know, I, you guys know I'm a native Floridian, I've been here my entire life. I spent many years on the Bradenton Tree and Land Preservation Board. And, you know, the, the city limits are small, and the development is more intense in a city, but they are known as a Tree Canopy City USA because of their aggressive approach to supporting tree canopy, and it makes a difference. It makes a difference in property values, it makes a difference in attracting people to the area and tourism and everything that we do. So, so I'm, I'm really pleased with the steps that we're taking now to decide how we're going to spend this money. As a Floridian, I really believe that, you know, preserving these Florida lands is a link to, to our history and for our future. It's really important, because I can tell you that I've seen Florida change dramatically since I was a kid, and I've told many of you the stories. My dad and I used to go on a boat, we would go out every weekend, and we could go to, boat to a coral reef and go diving and get home within the same day, you can't do that now, you know? You're lucky if you drive down to the Keys and you can find one that's still living. So, yeah, life has changed and, and Florida's important to preserve. And the biodiversity, I love that you talked about that, Charlie, because, I mean, the, the lands that have that, from the, the single cell to the fungus, to the, the different animals that live there are just invaluable. I mean, that's where we get our medicines from and our research, I mean, so I, I can't stress enough how important it is to preserve these lands and, and think about our economy, think about the fishing industry, and Charlie and I just met yesterday with somebody about the shellfish industry, and all of those things that contribute to Florida living. I do like using the LMAC Committee as our committee that would oversee this, I think it just makes sense. And I really appreciate Chairman Baugh's comments about geographic representation. And, you know, I like that type of representation on all of our committees, I wish that we could move towards that, because it's important to get people from every district that are listening to the concerns about how we're going to spend our money and how we're overseeing this county, so that we don't have just one area represented, but, so the entire county is represented. So, if we have to change our ordinance to make sure that East County and North County are represented, I think we should. I do like the, the backgrounds of some of the people there, because they are scientists with a background, which is going to be really important when deciding what lands we should purchase. I also really appreciate Commissioner Cruz's discussion about the pro forma, the business model that we need. That's, that's definitely something that we need to think through for the next twenty years, make some assumptions and, and see what we have. So, all very good discussion, thank you, that's all that I have, but I appreciate it, Charlie.
And before we start over, Commissioner Van Austinbridge, did you have anything to add, sir?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good discussion up to this point. What I have down here is a couple of issues that I had with this, first of all, I did not vote for this. Commissioner Cruz and I had some long discussions on the campaign trail in regards to this, and part of our discussion was, one, the land acquisition process that the county has in place, coming out of the Lena Road transaction, I was not confident in that, and we knew, that was a thirty-two million dollar purchase, and we knew that this was going to give us a lot more than fifty million dollars. There were a lot of question marks as to how much money there was going to be, I appreciate that Commissioner Cruz brought up that it's twenty-year bond limit, but looking at twenty years, I don't foresee seven percent growth for twenty years, that would be fantastic, coming from the real estate industry, I would love that, but I don't think that's going to be the case. But he is right that we're looking at a whole lot more than fifty million dollars. And so it left a lot of question marks, and, and now here we are. So one thing that I would sort of like to state is going forward, I would like for our new county administrator to consider reviewing the land acquisition process. I would like for us, him to consider the county not performing in-house appraisals, and I would like him to consider multiple appraisals out of the house, you know, third-party appraisals on anything over a million dollars. And I would also like for the person whose seal appears at the bottom of the appraisal, at the end of the appraisal, to be the person who presents that appraisal to the board. There, there was an issue with Lena with that, the way I feel that the, that appraisal was sort of cherry-picked, the evidence, and then the, the, the body of the appraisal was sort of cherry-picked. So anyway, I had some issues with, with that appraisal, and I think that had the appraiser himself presented the appraisal, we would have had a much different representation of that appraisal. I also read it as the county, which I was glad the county attorney cleared it up, that it is not just to acquire land, but also to improve land. So one of my questions would be, is, for, I guess for Charlie or for the county attorney, if, if we want to improve land that the county already owns, for instance, down at the end, near Robinson Preserve on Ninety-Ninth, down there by Geraldson's, the county owns about thirty acres down there, and lots of residents have come to me wanting to know what the county plans to do with that property. Could the revenue from this tax be used to improve that property? You know, I've heard a hundred different ideas as to what we could do with it, but I haven't sat down with, with Charlie yet to discuss it, and of course, I've had a couple investors reach out to me as well, saying that they want the property, but the community would really prefer it stay in the hands of the county and, and be accessible to the community as a whole. So my question would be, could the, the proceeds from this be used to improve land that we already own, number one? Number two, District Three out in the coastal areas, we have a lot of submerged land that I would like to see the county get control of, whether it's for leasing for aquaculture purposes, whether it's for planting seagrass beds, which would be, of course, improving that land. So can this be used for submerged, like to purchase submerged land, to plant seagrass beds? And then there's the issue of the Net Camp in Cortez, and there's a possibility that the state will essentially lease some of that land to either a not-for-profit or possibly to the county, I don't know if that's something that this commission is interested in, in injecting itself into, but if we are, could this land go to that? That would be a lease, not a purchase. And it's against submerged lands, so there'd be, you know, sort of a two-pronged to that question. And then I'm glad that, that sort of long-term maintenance can be achieved using this revenue stream. So, so for now, those are my questions. Can we improve land that we already own prior to the tax being passed? Can we look at, sort of, visit our land acquisition process before we start acquiring land with this tax? And lastly, can we purchase submerged lands, and can we improve submerged lands, and can we possibly lease submerged lands from the state, obviously, I don't know who else would lease them from? So thank you, Madam Chair.
Charlie, did you want to answer any of those questions now or come back?
Well, just based on my rudimentary knowledge about the nature of submerged lands, they are state-owned and they're not for sale, but lease, you can lease state lands, of course, and, and pay a lease payment. So that, that is a possibility. The appraisal process that I had described was all third-party, but that certainly can be clarified by, by yourselves, not, not performed in-house. We would want to participate, of course, in reviewing those appraisal reports, because we have the expertise here.
All right, but you're going, see, when you say we, please be more specific, because we don't-
The property management, the property management department-
Okay.
Property Acquisition Division has, but I, I'm believing that when I talk about appraisals following the state, state of Florida procedures, it is exclusively to use appraisers that are already pre-qualified by the state for environmental acquisition appraisals, and those are the parties that we would use from that list. It's my hope that we could use these funds for some of the lands that we already own that are in dire need of more help, I'm not sure on that.
Yeah, I can address that, I think the, I, I'm, I think the answer to that is probably yes, I, I do want to run it by our Bond Council, because our Bond Council did assist in the preparation of this language, but I think this is going to be interpreted pretty broadly, that's typically how these bond referenda work, when you're talking about ad valorem revenues. But we'll, we'll circle back with them and get confirmation to the board about that.
And Madam Chairman, if I had those twelve people here today occupying these seats, outfitted for the occasion, they would all unanimously ask you for more support- for the occasion, they would all unanimously ask you for more support to do the jobs that they're doing, working pretty hard out there, to help maintain the lands that we have and to have the resources to tackle the new ones under the goals that they hold in their own hearts.
Sure.
About the care that they exhibit on these properties is incredible. I'm very privileged to work with them. I'm really telling, I'm telling you.
We all are, yeah. I would agree, Charlie. Okay, I've got two commissioners on the board that have not spoken yet. Commissioner Bellamy and Commissioner.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, just for clarification on my questions. Mr. Clegg is going to look in to whether or not we can improve lands that we already own, and the administrator, I assume I'll get with him on the land acquisition process moving forward. And then on the lease question, I don't think I got a straight answer on whether or not the funds, the revenue stream can be used for leasing lands, particularly submerged lands.
He said yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I must have missed that one. I question whether we could do that, whether we could use this money to lease land. We can run that by bond counsel as well. Submerged lands are more complicated, and it is true, Charlie's correct, most of them are owned by the Board of Trustees under DEP's jurisdiction, but not all of them. There are quite a few out there that are still in private hands.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I am next on, I am next on the board, and I know you wanted to address the other two, but I have a response to Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge, and I am next on the board.
In just a moment.
Okay, I.
I am next on the board.
No, that's okay. I will, I'll turn the floor over to Commissioner Whitmore. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, because I have to tell you something.
Excuse me. I'm just trying to make it fair to everybody.
I'm next on the board, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Whitmore, you go ahead. You come first.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead.
Well, in 13, 14 years up there, this process has never changed.
Commissioner Whitmore, go ahead. Generally, everybody needs to.
Thank you. Kevin, if you could, or Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge, if you could stay to the end of the meeting, because I do have something to bring up about that net camp under Commissioner's comments, because I was asked by, Tommy Gregory's office called me yesterday, and I've met with Pat Neal and Karen Bell, and I can only tell you publicly what happened, but that may address some of your questions on that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
You're welcome. And, you know, I can't tell you until it's public unless we're public, so. And I agree with Commissioner Cruz about the little things, the little properties that you're talking about. The problem is with LMAC is we've not, we haven't had funding since I've been up here. So the things that you did see, like the Ungarelli Preserve, was a fluke, and they've looked at properties throughout the years, and we just can't afford it. Remember, we paid $5 million for King Ranch, just for five acres? Something like that? I mean, that doesn't mean it's an environmental land, but that's what we paid, and that's the cost of properties. It was made, comments was made, a few citizens on the board, they want on this board besides LMAC members. Well, we can decide who's on the LMAC, you know, we can change if we want the membership. These people have worked very hard, and some of them for years, so I would at least, whatever, whoever's on this board be part of LMAC, and then we can decide how we do it later. These people were duly appointed by the board, and they met the qualifications per our ordinance. So I don't want to dissolve the entire board. It was also mentioned that a former member up here, and it was Commissioner Trace, had a family member that she abstained from a vote because her other, her other side of her family, I guess, must be dealing with somebody. She has nothing to do with that, but there could have been a conflict of interest, so that's why she did it, because it could benefit a family member. And again, Commissioner Cruz, I like your business model, but I did want to let Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge know about the net camp at the end of the meeting.
All right, before we move on, I just, I do want to say, it is the chair's prerogative to let other commissioners speak who have not had a chance yet before we start over. So that is the reason, and I always try to abide by that. I think it's just being correct. Commissioner Bellamy and then Commissioner Satcher.
Yeah, great, great discussion. I always like the way George, you know, look at those numbers and give us a better understanding on what we're doing, not only just short-term, but also long-term potential impact, so we appreciate that. But just looking at it, as far as where you're talking about the potential impact long-term, and whether it's acquiring land or land improvement or potential, preventing stormwater. So I have, I have a couple of questions, you know? When we're talking, and maybe this is the legal order, Charlie, but when we talk about land improvement, what does that mean? I mean, we can, to me, when you're talking about land, that's, it's a real broad approach. So when you're talking about land improvement, can you give me some specifics because?
Be happy to. Look at Preco Preserve, if you had a chance to drive by.
And I have.
And it was a farm field. It is now a virtual paradise under the guiding hand of Damon Moore. 67 different species of grasses alone, a healthy habitat, an area where we can also perhaps utilize the seagrasses that are growing and will be growing there to offset mitigation costs for other projects. That's one example. Robinson Preserve Expansion, where you visited during the ribbon cutting of the canopy zone, that too was a farm field, and the canopy zone where we visited was resplendent with Australian pine. Probably 60% of the land cover there was Australian pine. Again, you walk through that 20 acres, you won't find one. So management of lands in our goals are to recreate, when we are given a parcel and we evaluate its proximity to water, the environment, soils, elevation, and we see what Mother Nature may have had there at the turn of the century or even earlier, and we endeavor to change that landscape back to the natural communities that existed, believing that that change helps maintain the balance between the take of property for very important purposes like roads, churches, highways, houses, where we live, where we do business, and what Florida was and still can be. So our land, when we do land management, it is changing the landscape to return as close as possible to the natural environment that was there. Sometimes we're more aggressive. There were no water, there were no lakes at Robinson Preserve when we bought it, but we saw an opportunity so close to the Gulf to make specific habitat for nursery species of tarpon, redfish, trout, and all the others that require a backwater habitat that did not exist there. We've built it, and recently leased by the Conservation, Coastal Conservation Association of, was it 15,000 redfish hatchlings, is a testament to people's trust and belief that we're doing the right things in consultation with the state to actually create things that weren't there before but mimic what Mother Nature has always provided. So when we talk about land management, it's a landscape change, landscape scale change to return a natural habitat or, in our humble opinion, and that is to Mother Nature, our humble opinion, to provide environmental improvements that weren't there before because we can.
Yeah, so.
Could I add to that, please? I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think you should, you need to hear the legal answer, too. Because the legal answer is a little different.
That was Charlie, you should hear that.
The legal answer is an improvement is any fixed capital outlay under Florida law, and it means a lot more than simply environmental improvements. I mean, under this language, you could be digging retention ponds to deal with stormwater mitigation pollution and be within the scope of this referendum.
And that's where I'm going, but not to that depth. But my real, my next question is, so how do we identify, right, what land that we will improve? Because now we're in a situation where every district member, you know, have a concern as far as areas of land improvement that they feel like that they have in their particular district. So Reggie Bellamy, District 2, as far as land that the county owns, Lincoln Park, the canal, who needs to be cleaned, does this fall up under that category? And that's why I'm asking, the way you laid it out, George, Commissioner Cruz, no disrespect, sir, the way you laid it out, it was very enlightening that there may be some opportunity to get some things done, but here's the true question from my understanding, how do we identify? And I think we need to come up with that as far as the board, something what they did the previous county administrator say, well, this is your wish list. You know, what areas in your district do we need to identify so we can say, you know, I have a stormwater runoff issue where we have flooding in District 2. Is that an area that we can go down? And there you go. Go ahead.
Well, it's not a flood control referendum, it's a pollution referendum, so.
I think one thing leads to another.
And this goes back to my point earlier, you have to stick within the language of the ballot referendum, and so if it is to address stormwater pollution, then it is a legally available use of funds to improve property for that purpose, but it does not, the referendum does not include flood control improvements, so it is not akin to a stormwater fee in that respect.
Well, this could be how you word it.
It's gonna be interesting.
Yeah, it's all about how you maneuver it, so.
The intent of the voter.
All right, so, are you, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just gonna, gonna close out as far as the representation in the North and East County. Here's my concern about that. If it's commissioners, we can't, we can't sit on a committee, right? So do we identify environmental individuals from our district representative, or? I'm just concerned because initially we say that there was a commission on there. I think we all agree that we should have some type of representation from North and East County. Sure, I mean, that's what this sort of works out.
They were, yeah, it was a liaison, it wasn't a board.
Let's keep order here.
He asked me to dialogue. So I can't, Madam Chair?
I'm sorry.
He just asked a question.
I was just waiting for him to make sure he was finished.
Yeah, it was a liaison, it was never a board member, just so you know. We just sat in the audience.
Anything else, Commissioner? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, so I was part of the 30% that did not vote for this, and my reasoning and my reluctance to vote for this was because I saw it as how much power it was gonna give the government, and I am reluctant to ever give government extra power. And so this is a lot of money, and I just want to say upfront that I want us to be incredibly transparent in how we do this. So if some of it is gonna go to pollution control in the, fine, but let's set the percentage, let's agree to it, and then we'll be held accountable by our voters to it. The same thing with the land that we're purchasing. I am not, you know, the, doing favors for, you know, certain people that it seemed as a voter, you know? I mean, I was elected in November, so before that, it seemed to someone, as a voter, it seemed like sometimes the county was doing favors. And I don't, I don't want to be a part of that. I wanna, and I'm, and I'm not going against what you've put forward as far as our criteria. I am just reiterating, these need to be very spelled out, we need to be very deliberate. The LMAC board, I'm in favor of keeping that, but I also think that it's important we realize that we were, we are responsible to our voters as the ultimate policymaking, decision-making board, or policymaking board. So we need to know what's going on ahead of time throughout the process to keep this from becoming a buddy-buddy system. And so, and I don't want to see that. As far as what I would like to see, what I am excited about, what I liked about the referendum, I love the fact that we're stepping forward and saying, you know, we've got things that are worth preserving here in Manatee County and here in Florida, and we're gonna step forward and do that. And that just says a lot about the citizens here in Manatee County. They care about that. I like, when I look and see the vision, now, the vision isn't completed, but when I see the vision for Hidden Harbor, so I've sat down with Charlie and talked about, I love that model. It's gonna have, you know, stuff that a family can enjoy as you come to that park or to that area, to the, and then it's gonna have, it's already got the set aside that's really beautiful and environmentally valuable. You can see that as you go over the Fort Hammer Bridge, if you're going north, you look to your right, and you can tell how much that's been improved. So I think that we need to look at that as far as, I'm not looking, I mean, there could be circumstances that might be worthwhile, but in general, we need people to be able to access these lands, you know, through passive trails, things like that. I'd like to see, you know, 50 years ago, people were, or less than that, I'd like to see where we could have horses in some of these places, you know, so you could take and go ride. On the LMAC, I think that Tarasia needs to be added as one of the island communities. There's no reason to leave them out of that equation along with the North and the East consideration as far as that a lot of our population is there and more is coming, and so it makes sense for them to have a seat at the table. And so with that, I just, I just, I see as that we can go forward, there's a way to go forward where the people are gonna be pleased with it. If they feel like, if I were a voter and I felt like I had been sold one thing and bought another, I would be upset. So I think they are going to be, to understand that we do need to improve some things, that we do need to manage some things, that it does take money to do all that, very understanding, reasonable, but if this becomes, you know, where we just have an unlimited source of funds, how much is it? Anyway, according to Commissioner Cruz, a quarter of a billion dollars. You know, that wouldn't be, we need to do a good job, and so I like that we're having this meeting, we're talking about it up front, and I'm looking forward to seeing those parameters set as we go forward. Thank you.
Okay. Interestingly enough, I just want to say, I didn't vote for it either, so I'm, it's interesting. Commissioner Cruz and then, is it Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge? All right, and then Commissioner Whitmore. Then we're gonna take a 10-minute break.
Yeah, these are just quick kind of responses to people. Well, a couple of people have mentioned specific representation in the North and the East. I don't have a problem with it, but, you know, I've been on this board where we've had to approve people for a couple of these boards so far. If you look at the applications, it says what district they're in, they're required to put that. I've actually asked Karen at the time, and now I'll be asked, for copies of all of the resumes and the applications from the people that are still sitting on that board, and I've actually used what district people are in as part of my tiebreaker decision-making in terms of who I've nominated to ensure that there's, you could still do it, you don't have to require it. We can just do it based on all of us paying attention and realizing, hey, wait a minute, you know, we've got, it's overweighted to District 3, maybe we should pick this person who's qualified and is applying from District 1. There's a way of getting around it, but I don't care if we want to add it. Just seems like another layer of restricting better quality people. If we get an amazing qualified person in District 5, we're like, oh, it's gotta be District 1, sorry, and then we get nobody of quality there, we're stuck with whoever just to fill a seat for Quorum. Relative to talking about existing land improvement, again, I, I get what the county attorney's saying, it's very broad in terms of this, but just because something's worded that way doesn't mean the expectations are there. Now, years and years and years ago, somebody tried to pass an engine and healthcare tax by calling it a millage decrease. People saw through that. The idea of this tax, the way I, the way I interpret it, the way a lot of people I spoke to on the trail thought about it, was this was money to acquire new property for the quality of life and for environmental protection of Manatee County. Turning around to the taxpayers and saying, we're going to take your quarter of a billion dollars over the next 20 years, and we're gonna add more swing sets to existing land we already own, in my mind defeats the perception of what this tax was for, because we're not adding more green space, we're not taking away developable rights from some, or space from somebody. All we're doing is improving what we already have, and we have an IST tax that we push through by saying, we're gonna do some of this stuff. We've got general reserve funds that can do some of this stuff. We have impact fees to buy a park for Park's sake that doesn't necessarily qualify as an environmental acquisition. It's not on a watershed, it's just, we need another park here because we've got a growth of rooftops there. Now, we've got revenue sources for all that. This revenue source was supposed to be first and foremost for environmental protection and land conservation. That's how it was presented regardless of how it was worded. We can word it as broad as we want, but people expected us to acquire green space for the future. So that's just my view on it. And again, we only promised $50 million worth of it. We accidentally charged them a quarter of a billion dollars, so, you know, we kind of have a little.
Accidentally.
A little bit left over here. And for Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge's sake, I did rerun my model at a 4% growth, which I think is low, because, again, if we have 10,000 people per year moving here, that's on average 4,000 new homes, that two and a half people per home, that organically, even if, even if. if, even if existing assets are only increasing 2%, 3%, the new homes, you know, drive that overall tax base up substantially more. By rerunning it at only 4%, it still works out after debt service of an additional $125 million. That's two and a half times the bonding capacity we have, and that's at a 4% growth rate. So we do have a lot of money. I do think that this needs to be a multi-tiered thing. We need to say, okay, 50 million, in my view, needs to be spent on new acquisitions of land as promised. The other 125 million can be used to improve that land, to create trails and parks and things for, you know, put in a bathroom, or it could be used for existing land, whatever we want to do with that excess limb, because that was, that was technically money that we didn't promise we were gonna do anything with other than use it towards land. We just happen to have it. So that'd be my view. Just improving land to improve it, and everyone kind of throwing in, how about this park? How about a couple more lanes and a pool? How about another slide? In my mind, wasn't the intent of it. Wasn't the intent of the ordinance and the proposal on the ballot that 71% of the people in Manatee County voted for.
I already have money for the pool.
We, um.
I'm bad. Commissioner Van Austinbridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. To be clear, Commissioner Cruz.
Got a jacket on now.
Much classier now, Kevin.
Got your jacket on now.
Yeah, well, I thought I looked kind of shabby with this t-shirt. You know, I'm a classed up.
With a t-shirt and a hood.
So I 100% support your plan of 20 years of 7% growth. I don't want you to think I don't support that. I could retire in 20 years if that was the case. And I just want to address that I mentioned that I did not vote for the tax. I did not vote for the tax, however, it doesn't mean that I will not, voters did, and it passed overwhelmingly. So I will fully support and implement the tax. People don't have to worry about that. Charlie Hunziger, I sit on the Sarasota Estuary Board, and you and I have had long discussions about sort of a natural filtration system that would, the, sort of the pilot project would be in GT Bray along the Cedar Hammock Ditch. And essentially, for the rest of you and folks at home, the plan would be that we would essentially build a marsh along these creeks, and this would be Cedar Hammock Creek, and these drainage ditches that run towards our bay. And you would want to build them probably in my district because it's fairly close to the coastline. And the water would sort of percolate through this marsh on an average day, and it might take a day or two for it to make it through, and there are grasses and things in there. And it's a marsh, it's a marsh. Definition of a marsh, by the way, the difference between a marsh and a swamp, a swamp experiences tidal change, or sorry, a marsh experiences tidal change, a swamp does not. So this, this could be close enough to the, to the water that it might, you know, be backed up during high tide, but that'll be fine, it can be brackish at times. When there is high water, high runoff, it's grass, it would just basically get knocked down as the water ran through, wouldn't really be an issue. So the Estuary Board is talking about doing a pilot project in 2029 in, I think it was like GT Bray, because we already own the land there. But that's something that I would really, Charlie, like you to put together something for, add to a workshop, a future workshop, to discuss with the board, because I don't want, I wouldn't want to wait, if we have these funds at our, at our hands, I would not want to wait till 2029 to do that. I would, even if it means we're gonna go it alone without the Sarasota Estuary Program, that's fine, but I think it's something which is a great idea, you've sold me on it, and I think it will go a long way towards improving our water quality. Ware's Creek is another prime candidate, Bowles Creek and Commissioner Serbia's district, Ware's Creek, of course, being in Commissioner Bellamy's district. These, I think all three are great candidates for that, that would naturally filter out a lot of the water before it reaches, before it reaches the bay. And that's an example, Commissioner Cruz, I think of, you know, that's land we already own, GT Bray, but I'm not looking to put a swing set there. You know, I'm looking to put some kind of natural filtration that will improve water quality, which was in the language of the, of the referendum. Part of the reason I didn't vote for the referendum is I felt the language was misleading for all the reasons that you have pointed out today, but that would go along with the language of the referendum. What else did I have on here? Oh, so if we were to acquire submerged lands, Charlie, would planting seagrass or seeding that property, that submerged land for, say, oysters in Commissioner Bellamy's district or clams out in my district, would that be considered improving that land? Either planting grass or seeding for oysters and clams? Because all these things improve water quality. It's not just so that people can go, you know, harvest clams. Clams and oysters filter large amounts of water daily, and it goes a long way towards improving water quality. So that is a question, and then could you possibly bring us a workshop on those marshes that would be set up in the existing runoff areas? And, yeah, the only other thing, Commissioner Cruz, is I was pointing out, large acreage that the county already owns and really has no plan to improve, and I wasn't necessarily looking to put swing sets there. I'm really open to the, to the will of the board, but we have that property, we don't have any funds allocated to improve the 30 acres down there on 99th. There certainly is a desire from the constituents to see something done with it that would benefit, because right now it's just fenced off, no one's using it. And if we were to improve that property with these funds, green space, whatever we decide, whatever the will of the board is, but right now it's just, it's just wasted. You know, and it's worth a couple million dollars, we're not making anything off of it, we're just maintaining it. And so it's just, it's just costing us money, and it's just a liability sitting out there, and no one's enjoying it. So I'm not necessarily looking to take advantage of the open wording of the referendum. I am trying to sort of, you know, see that the will of the voter is done. So I look forward to the answers on that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Commissioner Cruz, did you want to respond?
I just want a quick response, because a couple of people mentioned, I have no problem improving existing land. I just think if we're going to use this, it was broadly worded, yes, but the biggest word, the boldest word was the word environment.
Right.
That was the main premise. However you want to interpret, whatever broad spectrum of whatever, environment is it. So any project, I don't care if it's the actual 50 million or if it's the additional 125 or 200 or 250, or whatever number you want to use based on growth rate, I think that the first hurdle when it comes to us for discussion should be, does this benefit Manatee County from an environmental standpoint? First and foremost, that's got, in my view, that's gotta be answered before it gets in the door for future discussion. So just because it's land that people would want, we've got other sources of funds. We should bring this 30 acres up and have the discussion, but I think as broadly as you want to do it, the one word that's constant throughout is environmental, and it needs to, in my view, have something to do with the improvement of our environment, either long-term by conservation land or short-term, or things we already own based on an improvement too, that is an improvement from an environmental standpoint. That's all I will say.
Commissioner Whitmore?
Well, then, I would say that we're on the same page, and that I think that I have stayed with the spirit of that with my proposed priorities. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Whitmore?
For one of the commissioners that did vote for this, my intent to vote for it was to environmentally protect and land acquisition, to protect our environment. Just what you're saying, George, you hit it spot on. Not to take care of a field that we have all this property that's not being used right now. That was never the intent. Our intent was, a lot of people don't support a lot of the development where you could buy, purchase the land and hopefully improve the environment, keep the wetlands, keep the drainage, do buffers, you know, all that kind of stuff. And that was, so you're 100% on spot on that, Commissioner Cruz. GT Bray, you know, there's, I understand that is a water quality, then I was thinking of Canal Row, but someday we're going to pipe that in, so why do this pilot project when we're gonna hopefully get the drainage fixed? But that is a water quality project, but instead of us going up front and doing this, why don't we just talk, I mean, again, this has to be run by the process too. We can't just sit up here and legislate from the diet or dictate from the diet. I think it's a good idea.
Well, Madam Chair, can I take a point of order?
Wait a minute, I'm not done yet.
Madam Chair, can I take a point of order?
I'm not done yet. You're gonna like what I have to say.
I specifically asked a question.
Hold on, Kevin, you're.
And then you interrupt.
Commissioner Van Austinbridge, can you wait just a moment? Please let her finish.
Let me just finish what I'm, what I'm trying to say.
I specifically asked a question.
Kevin, I know, but I'm still talking, I'm still in the middle of my sentence.
And then she filibusters throughout the entire meeting constantly, and now.
Can we please have one commissioner speak at a time? Commissioner Van Austinbridge, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to wait your turn, I apologize.
Yeah, I'm sorry you got upset, but if you'd let me finish.
So that Queen Carol can have the floor.
Okay, maybe not.
Yeah, okay, let me finish, please, Commissioner.
You know what, we're gonna go ahead and take a 10-minute recess.
He's done. No, no, let's.
Sure?
Yeah, what I was saying, is talk to Sarasota Bay, and if it's something that we decide that will protect, I mean, help the water quality, which is what this fits under, you can move the project up before 2029. That's what I was trying to get at, because if Sarasota Bay Estuary knows that they may have a willing partner to help, and if this fits the guidelines and we all support something like that, you can move it up sooner. I'm sorry, that's what I meant to say. It was a water quality, it wasn't a stormwater project. So I supported something like that, but I think we should go in partnerships with others if we can help with other funding. And also IST Committee, is this kind of what I'm thinking of, like the LMAC, where they kind of look at everything and oversee what we're doing? Mr. Clay will make sure that we are following the language of the referendum, correct? Your department will.
Well, I'll certainly advise you to.
Commissioner Satcher. Commissioner Satcher had said, you know, I just want to assure that I'm relying on our legal counsel to make sure we do.
I think we're getting giddy, Commissioner Whitmore, I apologize. I think we're all just getting.
I'm not.
Giddy. Commissioner Whitmore, are you?
Oh, yeah, I'm, I just wanted to apologize, I just wanted to get out, I agreed with Commissioner Van Austinbridge, I just think maybe there's a better way to work partnerships with other organizations and help this, get done with that.
Commissioner Van Austinbridge? Are you there, sir?
Yep.
I am, thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate, I appreciate the comments, Commissioner Whitmore, but I was really looking to Mr. Hunziger to expand on that. The questions were posed to him, but I do appreciate the advice.
Thanks.
Commissioner Satcher, then we are going to take a 10-minute recess.
I guess I'm not gonna hear from Mr. Hunziger.
In just a moment, Kevin, in just a moment.
11 minutes.
Go ahead.
Who's talking?
I was about to ask Charlie a question.
Don't ask.
Don't bother.
Charlie, did you have anything that you'd like to say at this point?
That sounds good.
Going back to any of the previous comments?
I do, I do.
Go ahead.
I do want to say, I do want to say that oftentimes we have to triage properties that we have, and it has, it does not address recreational attributes. We are losing properties along the Manatee River at Rye to Japanese Climbing Fern, and if we don't get to it, we can't get to it. Each, each week, we also, I mentioned, we have 12 individuals, all of them working supervisors down, district managers down below. We're able to manage 30,000 acres because we also pay for three correctional road gangs from the Hardy Correction Institute. 15 strong men show up Monday through Thursday, 10 hours a day, working those labor jobs that we cannot meet our needs ourselves. Those are recently canceled because the state has run into a budget issue, and without telling us when they may return, they stopped coming yesterday. It doesn't put us in too much of a bind if it goes on for the end of the year, but if it continues, we are not going to be able to pick up trash at Robinson.
Right.
We're to that point, or we'll have to, we'll have to stop going to eight of the preserves that we manage and say we're not managing them anymore. So we really, I want to give, again, a little, a little wave of appreciation to those who are working in the division, working hard. Each one of them will tell me that they're, they love the job they do, and they know that they can do more. So the swing sets that we've built have been, one, one swing set on Prico that you can sit on a bench and, anyway. But recreation is an important attribute, playgrounds are part of preserves, but they can come from a different funding source. But I don't mean to go anywhere. I want to break down Geraldson Farm for you, it's 20 acres. We have a plan for, we currently occupy five of those acres for our Ministry of Offices and our equipment and our gear to run the other 680 acres on the other side of the street. That leaves 15 acres, 10 of which are under a management plan by the Extension Services to provide an educational experience that we have yet to implement. The last five, I'm wrestling with a party that's a private party that wants to grow crops and sell them himself. I can't do that under procurement. So we're still, we're still working out how we can manage those things, but Commissioner Van Austinbridge, there is a plan for the continued public enjoyment of Geraldson, for the agricultural intentions that were always, always there. Seagrass mitigation and water quality improvement with a strategic placement of oysters and clams is one of the very heart, hearts of our BP oil spill funding, where we're going to be deploying oysters in the Manatee River, where we're working with state and federal grants and actions to deploy clams for water quality improvement, not only within the confines of Sarasota Bay, Key Royale, areas like that, but also around Port Manatee, where we expect to see a substantial return in investment for water quality attainment and seagrass mitigation in those locations. And finally, I appreciate your, your continued support for this program, because as you've mentioned, I think every, each and every one of you have voiced support for what you have identified as a very important environmental improvement, many of which can take place on large acreage, some of which can have a real meaningful change when you tackle a stormwater pond or flowing creek at GT Bray, or along Bullies Creek, or Pier Strain, or Gamble Creek, or Gap Creek, and all the others that are suffering from impairments due to development that previously has no stormwater control, or those that we can do. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Commissioner Van Austinbridge, did that answer your question, sir?
Yes, ma'am, it did. Thank you very much, Mr. Hunziger.
All right, we are gonna go ahead, Commissioner Satcher has agreed, I will call on him the minute that we get back. We're gonna take a 10-minute recess. Thank you. Thank you.
Up to 50 million in bonds, but then was also phrased as .15 mils in the language that was passed by the voters. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what the referendum said.
Okay. And so I did bring up, and something to consider, I want to, I'm going to look at this, the referendum that was passed closer, and see if, you know, when the voters read that, were they looking at, okay, this is up to 50 million, or were they looking at, if this goes up to 250 million, that's fine, but they're only going to bond 50. I'm curious as to that, because we have a, you know, an opportunity, we want to stick to what the, what the voters were voting for. And so if we need to dial back and say, you know, this was a $50 million vote that the voters passed unanimously, and not a $250 million vote, then we could consider not raising the full amount or the full mils, and then you've got a tax cut there. But, you know, it's just something worth considering. I'm going to read or reread what was voted on, because obviously, I trust the people, if this is the way they voted, we want to do our absolute best of implementing it in accordance to what their, their will is. Obviously, can't make everyone happy, but I think we can make a difference in our community. Thank you.
Commissioner Servia.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Charlie, thank you for bringing up the Hardy County State Prison shortage. So I think the, the cut that was made was $150 million. And in talking with the Hardy County, one of the officers over there this week, I've been told what that means to Manatee County, our eight maintenance squads will be eliminated. And so, and that, and that is a big hit, too. We, we get a lot of labor from, from those work squads at a very good price. He encouraged me and others to please reach out to our legislators. Only the preliminary budget has been passed, but that is a lot that will be lost if that, if that is the final budget. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, the, the way the referendum was worded, it was, it was almost worded as a two-tiered thing. One was, we agree to charge ourselves 15 mils, and then it subsequently authorized this board to issue up to $50 million worth of bonds. So they're, they're kind of mutually exclusive. So yes, they, everyone said, please take my money. And then they said, after you take my money, you can bond up to $50 million through it. That's kind of where I went with, with earlier, was, you know, it's not necessarily a tax cut, because they've already agreed to do it. It's going to be on the trim notices, it's going to be on the taxes. But there is a lot of excess cash that we can use for things that are in the, the nature of how this is worded, and what we're claiming is broad definitions. Like, there's, there's been, since 2008, or 2018, I mean, talk about a stormwater tax or fee, or however you want to word it. This covers it. Stormwater specifically mentioned. Don't you shake your hand like that. You said yourself it's broad.
He is, I see him.
It's your job to figure out how it's covered.
Sorry, I do not mean any disrespect, sir, but it, it covers the pollution side of it, but not the flood control side. A stormwater fee deals with both. So it, it covers part of it.
Oh, I'm going to have to.
Okay, fair enough. But there, there are things that, that we're talking about in here. So, you know, that's why I said, let's try to make sure the 50 million bonding portion of it is used towards the acquisition side, and then let's see what we can do, and let's, let's have this discussion in terms of exactly how broad County Attorney Clegg believes the language is, in terms of what we could do that we otherwise would have spent general revenue funds on, to be able to, to look at this from a tax-saving stand, you know, standpoint. But I, I do believe it's, it's two separate things. I don't think, the way I read it, I didn't read it to mean, well, after we, we bond 50 million, we can lower it to five mils. Or, hey, because we, we miscalculated, we're going to bond 250 million. I don't think either of those necessarily are, in my view, the way that we worded it.
All right, I'm next on the board. Interestingly enough, we did, we approved the wording for it, but we didn't put the wording together, as I recall, and Charlie, correct me if I'm wrong. But it was the Conservation Foundation. But what I would add, you know, I had not looked at it, Commissioner Cruz, like you said, and, and you're right. And, and that's very sad, I think, for our citizens, because that's not really what they voted for. That is not what they thought was going to happen. So, you know, it's, it's really, again, here we are, same old thing. Here we go again. So I'm very disappointed. I, I, I think it's very sad, and yet I did not, you know, want to see this approved. I did not vote for it, but at the same time, here it is. So, damn. The stormwater fee, though, I hope that Attorney Clegg is correct, because that is the last thing I think the people would want this money used for, is a stormwater fee. So I'm hoping that is not correct. But that's just me. Attorney Clegg, don't shake your hand.
Madam Chair, I just, I want to make sure that the board understands what lawyers do, is we give you the legal parameters. But I do recognize, obviously, that for the elected officials on this board, the priority is to discern what was the intent of the voters in approving this referendum. I do agree that it was presented to the voters as an environmental proposal. That, that is its overriding purpose. There is no question about that. So, it, look, I've worked on a lot of these over the years. They are, the, the courts do construe them broadly, because ballot language is limited to 75 words. You can only put so much detail in there. You don't have the ability to go into great detail when you put a ballot question in front of the voters, and the courts recognize that. But obviously, the board will need to make its own interpretation of what was the real purpose for it, and, and how you decide to use the money.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge, and then Commissioner Whitmore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I agree that we don't want to turn this into a stormwater fee. However, water quality was in the language of the referendum. And when it comes to stormwater, there is a, a water quality aspect to our stormwater. And some of the issues we're having with stormwater runoff lead to negative impact on our water quality. So, you know, the, for instance, the marshes that I pointed out that could be built, and, and Bowles Creek, and Cedar Hammock, and Weers Creek, there is a stormwater, obviously, aspect to that. But certainly, the, the purpose of it is to improve our water quality. So I, I think there is sort of a natural marriage there. And when you put language in a referendum that says that part of the, the purpose of the tax is to improve water quality, I, I think that this certainly should be considered. Thank you.
Yeah. And Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge, just to respond to your statement, I agree with 100% with what you just said. You're absolutely correct. And that is not at all what I meant when I was talking about stormwater. You know, the county tried very hard for a couple of years to get a stormwater fee approved, and we never would go there. We would not approve it. And it, you know, with what you're talking about, that's a whole different ballgame from what I was meaning. So, Commissioner Whitmore.
And me, as one that has actually admitted that I did vote for it, was, I never had intentions on capping it, because when you look at it, everything is so expensive. And I know the property value is how everything has gotten so expensive to even do a project. My, I think there's a cap on it, a limit to how long we're taxed for this, correct? What was it again?
The referendum talks about a bond term of 20 years, but the board could allow this to continue beyond that.
Right, but up to 20 years. Yeah, my intention was knowing that this, my whole intention was to make sure that we preserve lands, and we environmentally protected our lands as a person that actually supported it. Water quality, to me, was on the referendum, and I did support that. So of course, if we have water quality, but I understand not the flood control. I get that, what you're saying. But the projects, kind of like what Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge men, mentioned, marshes and stuff like that, and, and major swales, Bowley's Creek and all that, that makes perfect sense for water quality, but it doesn't help them for their flood control. So, and I, as a voter, I voted for the environmental protection, and the lands it takes to buy it. We know how expensive it is. So that, me as a voter that actually supported it, was my intent.
But I just want to make sure you understand, Commissioner Whitmore, that the board doesn't need the voters' permission to add millage.
Oh, I know.
That's, that's a power that's conferred upon this board by the Florida Constitution and Florida statutes. So that part of the referendum is what we call advisory. It's, it's something that the board's allowed to do under the Home Rule Act, just to ask the voters for their opinion. But the board has the ability to put more or less millage on, and really, you can't take that power away from the board with a referendum. So it's up to the board how much of the millage you're going to levy, and how long you're going to levy it for, regardless of what the referendum says. You cannot change that under the Florida Constitution.
Right. But my philosophy personally, as an elected official, has never been to raise millage without the voters supporting it. And that's why, when you brought up these stormwater fees, and this environmental tax and stuff, I believe the citizen should have a say, not just me, if some, if you're going to tax yourself like that. But I've never supported millage increase in property. So, but I understand that. We, we could always do that. Many of us just don't do it. We don't, that's not our thing.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, I think that's something we need to figure out. I mean, it's, it sounds like there's a lot of pieces. This has been a productive work session, but I think there's a lot of moving parts, and maybe some of this has helped kind of shake out where those moving parts are, because that is something we need to figure out exactly how we're going to handle this. Because I'm, I'm looking at the, it's a ballot itself. What it says is, they're authorizing Manatee County to levy an additional 15 mil ad verum tax, and issue general obligation bonds in total principal not to, not exceeding $50 million. So it's not because we're getting more money, we can do more than 50. The 50 is the cap. But then it says maturing within 20 years. So clearly, to your point, you can charge, this, this doesn't have a cutoff.
It's not.
You, you could theoretically charge this extra 15 mils till the end of time.
Perpetuity, yes, sir.
Right.
And just keep using it as, as a tax increase. But it doesn't say you have to have 20-year bonds either. I mean, we need to say, what do we intend to do with this legitimately? I mean, I, I'm looking at, go ahead.
I'm sorry. The reason that those limitations are in there, the, the aggregate principal amount and the maturity of the bonds, is it is a requirement that you go to the voters and get their approval to issue general obligation bonds under the Florida Constitution.
I smell smoke.
Yeah, we don't know what it is.
We don't know what it is?
We smell smoke and don't know what it is.
They're checking the control room.
Oh, I smell it now.
Oh, that's great. The first thing I hear is Reggie going, I smell smoke.
I do.
So you want to adjourn the meeting?
Can these, can these funds be used for smoke detectors?
I don't want you to get carbon monoxide.
Let's go ahead and recess.
Oh, I'm.
Do a temporary recess.
Oh, it's bad.
Till we find out where the smoke's coming from. Sorry for having to recess. We were smelling smoke. We just wanted to make sure everything was okay. Commissioner Cruz, and Commissioner, I'm sorry, County Attorney Clegg, would you all like to go ahead and?
So I was, I was just making the point that the reason you see those limitations in the referendum on the, the amount and the term of years for the bonds, is that is something that our Bond Council advised we need to have in there, because that's something you typically see in a general obligation bond. It's a requirement of that form of bonding. So that's why those parameters are in there. There is no requirement to go to the voters to get the authorization for the millage. So you're absolutely right. You could leave it in place regardless. You could have levied it regardless, quite honestly, if the board were so inclined. I recognize, that's not something the board would have done. But I'm saying, from a legal standpoint, that part of the referendum is purely advisory.
Gotcha. Yeah, and I was kind of almost going the, the other way, just from a hypothetical standpoint. Now, you know, because again, there's potentially a lot of money here. And it's, it's taxpayer money, and they asked us to do something specific with it. And that specific thing was to acquire environmentally sensitive land, which we can do with the $50 million. We said we were going to buy with it. We need to decide what we're going to do with the rest of this money, if there's something that needs to be done. Not, not because we're, we're taking a bunch more tax money from people to the tune of a quarter billion dollars, so now it's fine stuff to do with it. But is there legitimately things in the context of this referendum we should be doing? Because I'm looking at these numbers here, and it says we need to bond up to 10, up to 20 years. That's our maximum term.
Right.
That's an up to. That means you can bond for shorter terms as well. I'm looking at these exact same numbers, again, going back to my 7%, Kevin. But using that, you could do 10-year bonds at 2%. Only charge the millage for, for 10 years, and still have $37 million left over, after buying $50 million worth of stuff. I, I'm not saying that's where we go with it. Maybe it's 10, maybe it's 15, maybe it's the full 20, maybe it's in perpetuity, and we just keep taking money from people and coming up with stuff to do with it. But now, we need to understand, there's a big pool of cash. If we hold this for the whole 20 years, are there real things that fall into the, the context of what we promised we were going to do to even spend that money, or are we just taking the money because it's there? Because once we bond for 20 years, we're effectively more or less saying we're going to have this millage rate for 20 years. I, I think that's, we, we need to take all these steps and decide this as we're moving forward with this, because it doesn't have to be 20. It can be 10. It can be 5. It can be 50. All it says is, we can't have the bond term for more than 20 years. But that doesn't mean it can't be shorter than that. And if we all look at each other and say, you know what, there's really not a whole lot we could do with a quarter billion dollars, based on what this referendum says, let's just do a 10-year bond at 2% and pay that all off, and still have $37 million left over for improvements on that $50 million, and for operational costs. And then, if it works well, we can always put it back on a referendum after that. So I think we should at least understand, because if I was a, well, I am a taxpayer, but if I was every other taxpayer, I would say, look, you promised me something. Now you're saying that the definition is so broad that it may not be, you may not be using my money the way I expected you to use it when I, I voted for it. So either tell me how you're going to provide environmental, a quarter billion dollars worth of environmental benefits to me, or take less of my money, and you, as the board, have the right to take less, because you can just have shorter bond terms, and charge me this millage I voted for, for a shorter period, and still get the $50 million worth of land acquisition, which is really the, the carrot we dangled in front of everybody in the first place.
Right.
All right, Commissioner Servia.
Yes, thank you. And I just want-
Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Servia, if you don't mind. Mr. County Administrator, I know you had something you wanted to add.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I apologize, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It may have just been my hearing, but I just want to make it clear to anybody who's watching, it's, it's not 15 mils, it's .15. It's 15 hundreds of a mil. 15 hundreds of a mil.
Yeah, thank you.
Small amount.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Servia, go ahead.
No, that's all right, Madam Chairman. Thank you. And I just also want to note in this discussion that we don't have to bond for anything.
Right.
So, so that needs to be considered, too. I mean, I don't think that, at least this board member, is not going to spend money, because we have it. It's not burning a hole in my pocket. We have to have the right purchase at the right time, and that may not be immediate, and it, it may. I don't know. But just because we have the money, we can wait and save the money for the appropriate piece of property when it comes available.
True.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
And it's an important point that Commissioner Servia raises, because the, the ballot language provides for bonding in tranches. So should a piece of property come up, which requires the capital upfront, if you've got a three-month term, you could have a three-month closing, you could bond for the purchase, and you could have a number of series of bonds per purchase, which would, which would draw it out, and that would, you know, not, not require the full debt service.
Good point. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, I will just, I'm just responding directly to Commissioner. Just remember, come November, all of us up here are going to get a tax bill, and collectively, all of our bills are going to collect $6.2 million. And that's just going to be cash that sits in the bank until we do something with it. And whether it's bonding it, or not bonding it, or spending it or not spending it, people expected us to buy $50 million worth of environmental land for the betterment of Manatee County's future. So I don't think this could be dragged on forever, because it's just more cash we're sitting on. And the last thing most people want to hear is that Manatee County is sitting on even more cash, after we got 71% of people to agree to give us this money with a specific intent. And then we say, you know what, we couldn't find anything to do with it whatsoever. There's literally zero environmental land that we need to acquire right now. So I, I think we owe it to them to have some, I'm, I'm not going to call it urgency, I'm not saying go out and buy land for crazy prices, again. But, you know, we still owe it, we, we, we have a whole team here. We've got an entire board who can look at this. There are things we can be doing with it. We should be working towards an agreement that we're going to come up with $50 million worth of property, and Charlie and his team, and the, the board could be looking at that now, rather than sit on it, because it is, it's going to become more and more expensive, or it's just going to disappear. Because as soon as you put one house on there, that property's gone forever. You're never going to have another bite at that apple when somebody rezones it, or someone else buys it for more money, or growth trajectories towards where we could otherwise be buying property. It's just going to get worse every single year if we don't focus on this now.
Madam Chairman, may I dialogue?
Yes, please.
Yes, and, and good points, right? We certainly don't want to collect money and not do anything with it. But it, it is complicated. So we may know, hey, not this year, but next year, there may be some insight, you know, this land may come available, may be more important than this land over here. I don't know. I don't know what the future holds. But I do know that we need to spend it wisely in accordance with the language that was approved by the voters for land preservation. And I don't think we'll have any problem spending the money. But it needs to be spent to get the most bang for our buck for, for the people.
Agreed. And we don't need to bond day one, and then just wait for the money to come in. I mean, we, we said it, it only takes about 90 days to bond. There, there's only one major land purchase I've seen in recent memory that's been closed in less than 90 days. Usually, there's, there's an extended period of time to, to close a land deal, or you could at least negotiate it, to say, we're going to close this upon finalization and, and funding, you know, and floating of bonds. So, once we find the land, then we go out and we do the bonds. Otherwise, we're just paying 2% for nothing.
And, and the protections stops this board, you know. This board represents their constituents to spend that money the way they want to spend. So that's, that's the backstop. Thank you.
All right. Before we go to public comment, Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge, is there anything you'd like to add, sir?
He's not there.
He evacuated for the smell of the heat.
Yeah. I sent him a message, what happened.
That's why he hung up, Carol.
No, I told him it was just a heat strip.
All right. No other commissioners are on the board. There's nothing else. All right, we're going to open to public comment. Is there anyone here that would like to come forward and speak? Seth, do you have a couple of phone calls there, or?
Yes, Madam Chair. First caller is 408-408. Please press star six.
I am trying.
408, star six. Our next one is 605-605. Please press star six.
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
408, yes, we can hear you now. Please go ahead. State your name for the record, please.
My name is Carol Felch.
We can hear you, Carol. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. I very much appreciate this discussion. However, I feel this is the kind of discussion that we might have, should have had before we asked voters to increase our property taxes for environmental land. I also find it very interesting that we have a workshop where we really haven't, just as what Mr. Gibellina mentioned with your Affordable Housing Workshop, that we're really not having a workshop that is inclusive of all the resources that we have out there, by allowing the citizens to only have a three-minute conversation. This is something I think we should look into all workshops in encouraging more public input. What I find is extremely disconcerting to me, is that in this, we only have one public comment on the agenda with the record. We've, I've heard a lot of you talk about, you know, the public should have some input. There are different concerns in different districts as far as what we consider environmental lands, or things like this. But we really have, seem to have a problem with putting carts before horses. I said all along, when we had the environmental lands, that who wouldn't want to buy environmental land? But the deal that it was, when it was presented, was, you know, I will gladly take your $29 increase a year today, but I'm not going to tell you what I'm going to buy with that, or when I'm going to buy something with that. And, and I think that could have lent a lot more transparency and accountability if we had had this type of conversation. And, you know, we, we voted on the, on the warm fuzzies, but we certainly weren't told, you know, exactly what, and how, and when this money was going to be used. So it appears that we've just created another issue without a plan. And if you note, in the public comment, there was one public comment to do over one single acre of land, and we didn't even get a response on it. Not even a response. So what do you think is our feeling now, that we are giving you our money, and you guys can't decide how, when, what, or why to use it? And in the middle of an environmental disaster, we're having a conversation in a workshop about environmental land. It is quite a contradictory process in the optics. Now, having said that, we cannot, on the one hand, be worried about environmental land, when if you look at the environmental reports that have been submitted by the experts for basically every single development that has been approved out there, there are no environmental lands.
Okay, Carol, you need to, to close out here in just a second, okay?
I, I believe that my feelings are, are very well-known, and I think it's time that the board starts taking public input very much into account before they go on to these harebrained things again.
Thank you.
Thank you, caller 605-605, star six.
Andrew Griffin, Manatee County. So, a lot of good discussions on this topic, I think. I'm, this is what irritates me. So, again, I feel like the board went to the taxpayers, said, hey, we don't have money for this. We need to have money for this. And the taxpayers say, okay, we'll, we'll meet you. We'll, we'll give you $50 million to bond, or do whatever, however you want to do it, we'll do that for you. And then now we're coming here, we're realizing that we have no plan. We're collecting money from the taxpayers well over and above what the item on the, the vote, you know, on the, the ballot set. So it's just very, very, very concerning to me that this is, here we are again. And of course, this is the stuff from prior board, from a prior board. And I think it's the responsibility of our elected professionals to explain these bills to us in, in, in terms. And I think George did a great job at really opening our eyes, because I feel foolish. I didn't, I didn't vote for it, because I felt it was a tax. But I'm sure there's a lot of people that feel duped by the language in that measure. Finally, there's just one, one, one thing that I really want to see happen. And Ms. Whitmore, I really, really, as a resident, and as you an at-large commissioner, would really like you to start respecting the chair and the process. I really, really would. I'm not trying to attack you, but it's starting to get annoying. And we just need to follow the rules, just like I have to follow the rules, you need to follow the rules, too. And with that, I close. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you. Any other calls, Seth?
Yes, Madam Chair, 445-445, star six.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mr. Gibellina, for the record, very informative. My public comment would be that should just let the community decide in what direction we want to go. I mean, you call this a workshop, but there's really not any, any stakeholder involvement in this. I think a couple of town hall meetings, I think, involve all the citizens that want to be involved, and you never know. At, at the end of the day, we only may meet 30 ma- to be involved. And you never know. At the end of the day, we only may need $30 million. You guys always go for the top dollar, whether you use it or not. Well, maybe we don't need that much, as far as I'm concerned. So I think we need to take a pause, have more public comments, have a few town hall meetings. And these workshops, just like the Affordable Housing Workshop coming up, you don't involve the stakeholders in these meetings. You expect us to listen to you all day long and then corral our statements in the three minutes. Perhaps we put, just like you had questions, attorney or the other personnel that could answer those. We never had that opportunity to be in the arena with you. And that's just wrong. That policy needs to change. You need to have the public, the PowerPoint presentations or anything you're discussing at the time of the PowerPoint. So I would certainly hope that come Thursday, we are open up to the public during the PowerPoint presentation. And I think you'd get much more feedback than thinking for three minutes that we're supposed to answer all the questions on the complete presentation. It's a search to the taxpayer, it's a search to the guys that make a public comment in our three minutes. So, sure, we'll be at the school board tonight, and I'll see everyone at the tea party. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
That's all the calls we have, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. Just a couple of comments from me. We don't have any plans because this is a new board, and we wanted to wait and make sure that we looked at everything before any decisions were made. So I think it's the right thing not to come into this meeting today with any plans on any particular land or anything else. We're looking at it from the bottom, looking up. Glenn Jubelina, top dollar. You know what? We haven't said we're going to do that either. So, you know, don't start, you know, taking things for granted. I think if you listen to this workshop today, you can see that we have a lot of questions and not happy with some of the way things are going and have gone on this. So stay tuned. I don't think it's over yet. I don't think we're anywhere near ready to decide to move forward or not to move forward. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, just want to comment on a couple of things. Carol, we do read all of the emails that come in. Believe me, sometimes we get a lot of them. This one, we just didn't. To your point, there was only one public comment that was submitted for the agenda. He said it was in regard to one piece of property, and we didn't even mention it. We mentioned it twice. It was one person specifically saying that they wanted us to use this environmental millage that the entire county is paying to buy a one and a half acre parcel of triangle-shaped parcel of land at $675 and $70. I specifically mentioned that in response to a specific email that was sent. So we do read these things. We do talk to you. We do listen to what the public's saying. I just do not agree with that particular email because that is not an environmental issue. That is a avoiding rezoning issue because people don't want it rezoned issue. And that was part of the context of things I said. So, we did read it. I am aware of the email. I just don't agree with it and did mention it. To Glenn, relative to having a plan, not knowing what to do with it, and Andrea made mention of it as well in terms of the extent of the money. I think, I don't know, I wasn't on this board when this .15 mills came up. It seems to me like if a symbol, the millage that was requested versus the bonding that was proposed don't seem to jive. I don't know if somebody accidentally moved a decimal point somewhere or something else happened. I just can't figure out how someone got to that millage request with that bonding request if there wasn't either a mistake or an intent of saying, hey, we're going to use words like environmental, and that's going to get this voted for. So let's shoot for the moon now and just take more money than we need and then figure out what to do with it later. Because again, you can get the same $50 million worth of bonding at .02 mills, and you could basically bond the $50 million. Anything above and beyond that was somebody saying, eh, if everyone's going to vote for it anyway, let's take more rather than less. And I'm sure we can find something. So I agree, but that's what was voted on. That's what we're collecting. It's not up to the board to unwind in a duly-elected referendum. Now it's our job to do something efficient with it, whether it's shorten the term like I just discussed or coming up with meaningful things to do with it that allows us to avoid using other general tax revenue that could potentially result in a lower millage down the road, which sort of offsets this. And last, I'll talk to Glenn. This isn't going to be popular for you, Glenn, because you've mentioned it many times. But I'll mention it because it's reality, even if other people don't want to mention it. This is not a town hall. This is by definition a work session. In normal life, this kind of conversation would happen in a hallway. This kind of conversation would happen when all of us say, let's have a team lunch on Monday and talk about what we're going to do with this tax. Or let's talk about it in the conference room, and we'll bring Charlie in to give a presentation. We can't do that due to sunshine. So this is not a public work session, per se. This is a board work session for us to be able to collectively get information from our staff and have open and free dialogue with each other so that not only can we understand where each other's coming from, from a policy standpoint, but the staff can understand so that they can better frame things going forward for Manatee County based on our thoughts and beliefs. That's what the work session is. We do allow it to be public because we have to for sunshine. We do allow three minutes of public comment like we always do. We do allow everyone to send in emails. All of that's in there. But this is not a work session for Manatee County. This is essentially a work session for seven people because we have no other ability to have this kind of just casual discussion about a specific topic. That said, all of you have our email addresses. You've got our phone numbers. You know where we work. I've answered plenty of requests for Zoom calls, and I've had conversations about any number of topics, this being one of them. You can reach out to me anytime you want. Come to my office. We could sit and talk. You know, I'll happily come to an Affordable Housing and talk to you. You know, I've had a town hall before. I'd love to do a specific topic one and do it on Affordable Housing if people come out. But trying to open this up freely to the public while we have minutes being taken, while it's being recorded, while the seven of us are trying to, you know, productively have dialogue and just have people freewheeling conversations and calling out from the crowd isn't productive at all from a time standpoint. This Affordable Housing one coming up Thursday has been scheduled as a work session since the day I started on this board in November and probably beforehand. There has been sufficient amount of time for anybody to reach out and have dialogue. And you most certainly have, and it's been very beneficial. And I'm sure many of your comments and thoughts relative to impact fees, relative to tiny homes and ADUs are going to be brought up on Thursday. You have, in fact, influenced some of the discussion for that policy, even if you can't do it at the time of the work session. But that's just what a work session is in my mind. So I'm going to say it even if other people won't. It's not geared towards public discussion. Town halls are, individual meetings are, emails are. The work sessions are essentially for the seven of us. So maybe it's just worded incorrectly, and we should call it something else. But, no, that's just how these are going to go forward. I don't agree. They should be blindly opened up because it's just not productive.
Attorney Clegg.
I think I'll go last, if that's all right.
Oh, that's fine. Commissioner Whitmore?
Just real quick. I thank you, Commissioner Cruz. Glenn, I'm sure you're still listening. A lot of what you say, we do listen. And how do you think it's taken 10 years, but we're talking about ADUs and tiny homes. So, and I think City of Brayton is, I watched their meeting the other day. I saw you stand up there, and then I'm sure I'm going to watch you at the school board tonight. We had a PowerPoint today that actually laid out a plan with dates. Today was the start of it. It was the first day that we've actually been able to, like Commissioner Cruz said, talk about it. And then we discussed how we were going to implement what the will of the voters was. That's also discussed today. So we have gotten somewhere. Then we said, how are we going to set up LMAC and possibly adjust the membership? That was discussed today. That's what I'm thinking we're doing. And then we were going to identify, have LMAC with our, you know, with our input, identify lands or projects per the director, I mean, per the board's direction and the will of the voters to make sure it complies with the law. So we have gotten somewhere today. Maybe it doesn't seem like it. We've had many public meetings regarding this referendum. And in fact, there was a poll that went out. And before we even agreed to have public meetings on it, the poll showed 67% approval. Well, this passed 71% by the actual voters. So something was right there. So we did have public meetings. This is nothing surprise. And I'm sorry if some feel like they're let down, but the only time we could even start it on what just I've written down today is us talk today. So I think we made a lot of progress, more than I thought we would.
Commissioner Servia.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, really good discussion. Thank you for those comments. I appreciate hearing them. I'm going to ask Charlie some questions in just a moment. But I also want to say that this is the exact appropriate time to establish procedures when a referendum passes. You don't do it before. You do it at this time, which is very appropriate. So I don't think that anything is being done at the wrong time or too late. And hearing from the public has always been something that's very, very important to me, and I never want to discourage that. But it's true. This is a workshop business meeting of this board. But I encourage the public to contact me all the time, anytime. I will talk to anyone about any topic. So I do want to hear from the public. Charlie, what I wanted to ask you are just a few of the facts. I mean, I remember when this was passed, which was overwhelmingly passed. 71% is a huge number of people in the county that wanted this passed. And I think at the time, the statewide average for having preservation lands per county is about 30%, and we're at about 13%. And so there was viewed to be this desperate need for preserving open spaces as we are a coastal community that is growing explosively. And it doesn't look like it's going to slow down. So, and that's how you get that balance. You know, you can't tell people not to develop their land. They own it. We have to buy it. If we want it preserved, it needs to be bought by the taxpayers. So I do agree that this is the right way to preserve land. But Charlie, as you listen to all of the discussion here, do you have any comments? Because you are considered the expert on this topic, and I know that there have been some things said. Is there anything that you want to provide comment on to give us a better understanding as we close up the workshop?
Well, I'm going to give a general impression of thankfulness that we've had this discussion. I think your ideas expressed as a board are certainly within the parameters of the referendum. Remember, the campaign was not done by the Board of County Commissioners or your staff. This campaign was privately funded. Frequently asked questions were made available with extensive media and web context. I did not participate in that. I did not. Nor did any member of my staff. But, or my staff, our staff. There's nobody that's my staff. But I want to say that within the environmental parameters of the ballot, the things we're talking about today can be done. And I'm encouraged and thankful that you're thinking along those same lines. So, thank you.
Is that it, Misty?
That's it.
Okay. Well, Carol has something that she, I'm sorry.
I had one last comment. Yeah, I just had one final comment. And it really is to echo what Charlie just said, which is, I think, which should be remembered, that outside advocates came to this board and asked the board to put this on the ballot. We went back and forth with them quite a bit on the ballot language, but the numbers, the $50 million in the millage, they chose those numbers.
That's right.
And they could really speak for themselves as to why. But I can share with you in the dialogue we had with them, what they at least said to us was that, if you remember, the ballot language says the ad valorem bonds are payable from only the additional millage. So it's not going to hit the rest of our millage in terms of a pledge of our general obligation bonds. It's really restricted to that millage. And they said they need that much to have it be bankable at a good rate and have the money in addition to that that they were advocating for improvement in management, which was a big issue for them. So I don't want to speak for them. I'm not trying to argue their policy argument. But I'm trying to make sure the board understands, because some of you weren't here, you know, why they pushed that language. And the board directed us to put it together and put it on the ballot, and it passed. So that's why we are here today.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Commissioner Whitmore, you want to bring up about a net camp?
Before.
Yes, sir. Sorry.
Madam Chair, before we leave this topic, because I think.
Yeah, it's different.
So, Madam Chair and Commissioners, what I'm taking from this, kind of our to-do list, is to develop for your discussion a land acquisition and project process, which would also include looking at possible changes with LMAC, should that be required, which I'm not sure. Provide a financial projection in a 10- and 20-year planning horizon. Priority for public access and use of lands acquired under this resolution and ordinance. Potential inclusion of a horse park or trails, which I like it. And consideration of town halls to engage the public in acquisition and project planning as these projects are presented to us.
Can I just clarify with this? Because I mentioned that town hall thing. I just, I've said this before, and I've been meaning to do a topic-specific one instead of general. I just, we have a lot of work sessions coming up. Some of us have a little more passion toward or experience in some of these topics. I think it would make sense to look at the collective board up here and maybe even present, hey, we got this work session coming up in June. Would you be open to doing a town hall with the citizens? Like, I could do one with Affordable Housing. And Carol could do one, you know, if there's a healthcare-related thing. Where we just have a specialty and then have that one commissioner there to avoid sunshine and invite the public to have more of an open dialogue. I just think that's something we could at least offer out to the public. If people want to do it, you don't have to. It's not required. It's just something I thought, you know.
Madam Chair, my thought is more when the board has a specific project, someone's offering a piece of land, to perhaps have a forum to engage the public as we're working through how to use that land and how to preserve it and what the public would like access to. So, on a specific project basis, specific to the region, or is, so if that sounds like good direction, then we'll take that back.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I would just add, sorry, it's difficult when you're not in the chamber. If I could just add submerged lands and also the possibility of leasing land. And then lastly, just ensuring that we are able to improve land that we already owned at the time that the referendum was passed.
Okay.
All right. And Mr. County Administrator, also on the horses, I've had some people tell me that they would love to find a place where they could ride the horses in water. It's getting to be more and more of a problem.
Causeway.
Now, besides the causeway, please.
Don't want to open that.
No, but somewhere else. Maybe somewhere out in Maica. There's water out there.
Causeway, conversation.
Okay.
Or near Maica would be good.
Okay.
Yeah, Lincoln Park Pool.
Yeah.
He's on the waiting.
Anything else, Mr. County Administrator?
I think you changed the name of Lincoln Park at one of your meetings before I joined you.
Eddie Shannon.
It's ongoing. It's ongoing.
Okay. Real quick.
All right, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, I was approached by Pat Neal and Karen Bell, and to, and also, I know Tom Gregory's office attended also, to meet with them last week. And I told Mr. Administrator Hopes about this. They're looking, as you all know, the Cortez Net Camp is been, for them, it to be torn down, it's been extended to the end of session to see if we can come up with some kind of resolution. The board wrote a letter April 5th of 2018 asking the state to consider the historic nature of this Cortez Net Camp. It's been there for about 100 or more years. And I'm working with everybody to try to get Cortez to start a nonprofit. And that's probably, Commissioner Van Ostenbridge, if you're listening, that could possibly lease the lands regarding this. A lot of things are in play. But they've asked me if I could get a current letter from this current board that we still support efforts to try to save the Cortez Net Camp and include it in the National Register of Historic Places. Some people still think that this possibly would be the Guthrie Net Camp, and that's not what this is. We're working with the people that attended this meeting to have a quitclaim deed of the Guthrie family to get it all clean. And everything's moving really fast. But they did ask if I could get some support from this board to write a letter that we still support what we did in 2018. If you want, I can read it real fast. Or it, I more or less said what it's If you want, I can read it real fast, or it, I more or less said what it's going to be.
Do we need to vote on this issue, Commissioner?
No, no, I know, but I could, what I could do is get the letter drafted, and we could, do we even need to vote on this? We probably do, so Tuesday you could actually vote on it when it was prepared.
Why doesn't someone just update that and send it all to us? Then we can vote on Thursday because of the land use, maybe.
Yeah.
Exactly.
We can do that.
Okay, we'll do that, thank you, and everybody appreciates. That's all, and Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge, that's what I had to tell you that I could.
And I think most of us are aware of that situation. I know I had a.
Yeah, Pat asked me to be involved because of, you know, probably because of my friendships down there, too, and having to deal with some of the families down there, try to get them to sign this quitclaim deed. And so, but I know they've, I think they've talked to all of you individually. So, I'll have to, the only way I can communicate will be through writing, so Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge can stay in, and Commissioner Cruz, since that's their districts, and also copy all of you, but I just wanted to say it upfront what was going on on my end.
And I think Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge has something to add. Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really didn't have anything to add, I just wanted to thank Commissioner Whitmore for taking the lead on this, and let her know that as the district commissioner, I'm 100% supportive of her efforts.
And I actually told the board that I assumed you were, and if you were, I think that we could get this done, so I appreciate it.
All right. Anything else, Commissioners, before we adjourn this meeting, workshop, whatever you want to call it? All right, we are adjourned, thank you.